Hi folks, it's nine o'clock and after actually, so we can start our ceremony. It's in our fantastic day at City Hall. So, welcome everyone to our meeting of September 19th, 2019. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sparza.
President.
Councilmember Carbasi. Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Arias.
President.
And Council President Capriolio.
Thank you, I am here. Next, we have the invocation by Henry. Good to see you, it's been awhile sir. Welcome. And he's with the Way Christian Fellowship. Reverend Aputa would lead us in prayer, and as we stand for prayer, then we would remain standing and salute the flag. So if you all join us.
Councilmember Sparza, thank you for this opportunity. Let us pray. Lord God in heaven, hallowed be your name. Lord, you know that we as a community are challenged by issues beyond the ability of one individual. Thankfully, you've blessed us with a mayor, a city council, and a community rich in merit, talents, experiences, and viewpoints. When we allow ourselves to come together and draw from that array of diversity, we can tackle even the biggest challenges facing our community. Lord, remind us that even in our differences, we work towards the same goals and desires, such as the health and safety of our loved ones, shelter for individual and family members, and a community free of homelessness and drug and human trafficking. Lord, when we struggle to collaborate and incorporate our talents, remind us that we can move mountains when we are open to the talents the community has to offer. Lord, I lift up to you, our mayor, and each of our council members. I thank you for the sacrifice, effort, and time they give on behalf of our city. I ask that you restore to them tenfold what they give to the city. At the end of each day, let them, the head of all departments and all the city employees, to have enough energy at their disposal to spend quality time with their loved ones. In addition, each day at work, grant them the desire and ability for collaboration, empathy, reciprocity, and understanding of each other's plight. Now, may the love of God, his mercy and grace be with you all forever and ever. Amen.
Next, we'll move on to the agenda. Sidney Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have several changes for today. The first one is File ID 1911284, and it's the approval of the corrected minutes of August the 15th, 2019. It's regarding the Second Amendment to the Decision and Development Agreement. The vote should read four to one instead of five to one. The next correction is File ID 1911210. It's the corrected August 22nd minutes, and additional language was added to item N on pages 15 and 16. File ID 11258, appearance by Michael Rasvi. The speaker requested to be removed from the agenda. File ID 1911162, which is item 4A, Boards and Commissions, Reports, Reappointments, Removals of City Council. Number 11, Mayor Brand and Council President Capriolio are the two members, the word "alternative", our alternate needs to be removed from the heading. Item number 26, and that same item, Upper Kings Basin Integrated Regional Water Management JPA, vacant, Brock Bucci and Luis Chavez, our alternates. Brock Bucci, the new Assistant Director, is to replace Mike Carvahal. And then we also have File ID 1911286, item 4B has been moved to 2:00 PM, and it's a resolution joining the Multi-City County Amicus brief support of plaintiffs respondents in the Deferred Action Childhood Arrivals DACA, cases currently before the United States Supreme Court, and we want to add councilmembers Sparza and Soria as sponsors. And finally, there was a supplement added last night for item 4B, File ID 1911286, and it was additional documents for that item. Okay, hold on, one more. Okay, so this one is File ID 1911237, which is the 10-05 number three. Hearing CFD number 11, Annex 100, regarding a final track map 5587, has been continued to 9/26/2019. And those are all the changes I have.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Motion by Member Brettafield, second by Member Arias, third by Member Soria. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes seven zero, thank you. Are there any changes to the amended minutes other than what you recited, Madam Clerk? Any other changes other than those recited?
No more changes besides the ones I read.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Motion by Members Arias, second by Member Sparza. Any opposition? Seeing none, it passes seven zero, zero. So now we will go to the ceremonial presentations, and I have the privilege of going first. This is a proclamation for National Preparedness Month, and that is this month, the month of September. I'll be right down. What a lively crowd. Let's try that again. Good morning, everyone. One more time, good morning, everyone. There you go. Smiles on your faces, that's a nice start for this day. So, September is the National Preparedness Month. It's a time to prepare not only ourselves, but those we are in care of. So, as we know from watching the news and recent history, disasters are everywhere, so we need to be prepared for that. And we have the United Way and their team, which are fantastic at doing that. So, Lindsey, would you like to come down and bring your team with you? Casey, come on down. Good morning, how are you? Good to see you. Morning. Thank you for being here. So, tell us a little more about the role you play and what we can do to help you with that role in preparedness.
Great. So, thank you so much for honoring us this month. We are very excited for a couple of reasons. One is that, as you know and most of the other councilmembers know, we run a 211 hotline that not only offers support 24/7 during just normal times of crisis, during a disaster, we offer the frontline response to the whole community. So, a lot of times when there are just things that people need or questions that they have during a disaster, 211 is the place to go. We're even more excited and honored that we're partnering with the Governor's Office for Emergency Services to help get a million Californians disaster-ready. So, we are going to be launching a major campaign at the end of this month called Listos California, or Ready California, to help as many of our population get ready as possible. And the focus is going to be on the most vulnerable populations, so we're really very excited about being able to launch into that work as well.
Fantastic. Casey, do you want to say a word too?
No, I just, one thing that Lindsey pointed out the other day to me, for every dollar that we invest in preparedness, we save $7. So, it makes fiscal sense to be proactive in case of an emergency.
It's benefit both ways and every way, so. And with your leadership, we're going to succeed at that level of a million people. That's fantastic, wow. So, I'm proud to be part of this, and at City Hall, we have our own training of preparedness as well. And I instituted, I think, three years ago, hopefully it never happens, but the active shooter situation. So, we've been trained and prepared for that, so we're following in your footsteps and your leadership, and we're going to continue to do so. So, your team does so much, and this is a small way for us to say thank you and keep up the good work. And we'll read this proclamation for you.
Whereas the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties, along with community partners and State of California, has created 211, an information and referral helpline that gets people connected with agencies and/or organizations that can help them in their time of need. And whereas through the California For All Emergency Preparedness Campaign and 211, the most vulnerable of our neighbors are provided with education on emergency preparedness and resources in that critical time of need. And whereas education is provided for disaster prevention, and 211 will serve as a lifeline to housing and shelter and other essential services to help individuals and families in a time of crisis. And whereas a partner to several community-based organizations, the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties not only provides emergency preparedness, education, and resources, the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties identifies and fills gaps in solutions in local emergency plans and community-wide to the most underserved population of our community. And whereas 211 Fresno County is a free and confidential service that is available 24 hours, 7 days a week, and 365 days a year, in over 170 languages. Now therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby recognize the month of September 2019 to be National Prepared Month in the City of Fresno.
Round of applause, please. Congratulations. And Lindsey just advised me that they're welcome for any volunteers at any level, so anything you want to do or you think you can contribute to our community through the United Way, here's the perfect people to see and talk to about. So, please, you know, give them a call and get involved, that's what we need. Thank you all again. Good morning to you. Next, Member Soria. I don't have my sheet, so I'll see you down here in a minute. And by the way, welcome to the new Chief of Police, Andy Hall. Welcome to City Hall, I haven't officially said that yet as President, so welcome, and that fellow next you as well.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I have the pleasure of doing two proclamations this morning that are very special. One is in celebration of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationally every year starting September 15th, and I do want to invite some Fresno State Latino faculty up front. We do have Dr. Iran Barrera, also Esteban Para, Rodrigo Gomez, and Larry, if you want to join us, oh, okay, well, you can join us as well or take pictures. But I do want to welcome these fine gentlemen to City Hall.
Which word do I say?
You can stand right here next to me. First timers.
I know.
So, as I mentioned, every year beginning on September 15th and ending October 15th, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month here in the United States. This month-long celebration pays tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation. This year's theme is Hispanic Americans: A History of Serving Our Nation. The theme is intended to invite us to reflect on Hispanic American service and contributions to the history of our entire country. Our community has for long served as civil rights leaders, elected officials, educators, first responders, doctors, scientists, also veterans, and so we want to recognize all the Hispanic leaders and community members that have made positive contributions. We can highlight some of the major national ones that are, you know, not foreign to us, like Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, Jorge Ramos, who's a news reporter, correspondent, and Emmy Award winner, Cesar Chavez, a tremendous advocate, activist in our community, Dolores Huerta, who is still living and today here in our community, still fighting the good fight, as local and national leaders. But I wanted to take time to pay tribute to folks that are in the trenches here in our local community, especially the Latino Faculty Association and the Latino Faculty at Fresno State, because every year, they put on a great event for the students. And the service that you guys are doing at the university, essentially shaping the minds of the future leaders of not only this city, but our entire valley, deserves to pay tribute today as we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month. So, I want to thank all of you for the work that you guys do. Thank you for giving back to our community and for making sure that at Fresno State, the students don't forget what the Hispanic Heritage Month is about, and so I want to thank you guys. Wanted to give you an opportunity, if you wanted to say a little something.
Well, if you give me the mic, I might rap, so. On behalf of the Latino Faculty Staff and Staff Association, we want to thank the City Council and as well as you, Councilmember Soria, for sponsoring this or highlighting this Hispanic Heritage Month. The Latino Faculty Staff Association is a group within Fresno State that really identifies issues and capitalizes on opportunities for the Latino and faculty, so it's faculty and staff, I just want to make sure that we're clear, because staff do a lot of great work as well. But we want to say thank you on behalf of the Latino Faculty Staff Association for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to add, since we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, Fresno State serves more than 13,600 Hispanic students, which account for about 56% of its student body. It's known to be a Hispanic-serving institution, and so we're proud to have Fresno State here in our local community. So, Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record, it'd be great. Thank you.
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a national celebration held annually from September 15th to October 15th, where we recognize and celebrate the history, culture, and contributions made by Hispanic and Latino Americans. This tradition began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and later was expanded to be a month-long celebration by President Ronald Reagan in 1988. And whereas the commencement date of September 15th is important because it marks the anniversary of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, followed by the independence of Mexico on September 16th, and the independence of Chile on September 18th. And whereas the Central Valley is rich with Hispanic and Latino culture, the City of Fresno is made up of over 50% Hispanics, and Fresno State is considered a Hispanic-serving university, their student body is made up of over 56% Hispanics. And whereas Fresno State holds an annual Viva la Vida celebration with music by the Fresno State Marchiante Group and dance by Los Antes de Ostlán, the goal of this event is to connect students with Hispanic programs, organizations, and clubs. This is organized by the Latino, a faculty staff, and a staff association, Latino programs and services of the Cross Culture and Gender Center, and student involvement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and City Council does hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2019, to be Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Fresno.
Thank you, and you know, the crown jewel of my District Four is Fresno State, and I'm a graduate, and Larry and I spent a lot of time together at the university. It's multicultural, it's state-of-the-art, they've won so many awards recently. I was going to list those, but I only have an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper. But it's fantastic. And the students, administration, and Louis is a graduate of Fresno State.
Twice.
Twice. Do we want to go into that? So, he was a sophomore twice. But we proudly represent Fresno State up here on the dais, and we're more than willing to work with those from Berkeley, Member Soria, we tease her a lot about that. Fresno State, thank you for being here, it's a great university, and participate as much as you can, they have tons of events out there every day, really. Right, Larry? I see you nodding up and down, you guys, thank you.
The second proclamation that I have an honor to present is for the Fresno Real Pride Film Festival. Want to invite Kathleen Arambula Reyna, Michael Reyna, Margot Sorano, Nisha Blancas, Tony Anka, Kristod, and Farin Montañez. You guys want to come on now? So, I want to thank the Real Pride Film Festival Board members, and their volunteers, actually, that put this great event every year here in the City of Fresno, and it happens in the Tower District, and I'm honored, I don't know if Councilmember Arias, he was with me last night where we actually had the opportunity to kick off the film festival for the 30th year. And it is remarkable that this festival has been happening for three decades in our local community, and so we're very proud of the work that has been done to make sure that the LGBT community is, we've taken notice, and that we make sure that we embrace them, and that they share their experiences with us so that we really reflect on the diversity that exists here in the City of Fresno. So, I wanted to take a moment to present this great proclamation for the work that they've done 30 years to showcase these great films that are family films and that you see, last night it was awesome to see that Tower Theater full of families, neighbors, people even from outside of Fresno come in. So, we also know and recognize that it's an economic drive for that area in the Tower, and so we want to thank you for the work that you guys do every year to make sure that this is a success. And then wanted to give you guys an opportunity just maybe to highlight some of the things that will be happening, and tell us a little bit about how much this also festival has grown in the last three decades, because I know yesterday, the list of sponsors has gone fairly long, and so I want to thank those sponsors that have stepped up and that have said, "We're going to support our LGBT community here in the City of Fresno."
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. Thank you, City Council and Mayor Brand for honoring and acknowledging Fresno Real Pride. I'm Kathleen Arambula Reyna, and I serve as the Board President and Festival Director of Fresno Real Pride. And I want to tell you that the board members that you see in front of you are one of a long line of board members. As Councilmember Soria mentioned, this has been 30 years in the making, and we are also proud to say that it started at Fresno State. It was the idea of two Fresno State students who actually went to a larger city, saw some film festival there, and decided, "Why doesn't Fresno have this?" And they started in a small classroom at Fresno State, and it grew from there. From there, it moved to the old movie theater in Fig Garden Village that no longer exists, and then we found a home in the Tower District Theater, and we have been there for a number of years. It is important that, yes, we do have a lot of big sponsors that come and support us, but we are also very proud of our community organizations and partnerships. We do partnership with the College of Social Sciences from Fresno State, the Del Library, excuse me. And we also partner with many organizations such as Arte Americas and so many more arts councils. The reason why I mention this is, our film festival is here not to necessarily make a statement of diversity, but more to make a statement in terms of the arts and community. And I felt that today's prayer was quite appropriate in terms that we are all different, however, we all bring different skills to give to this city, and we are proud to be part of that. And we're proud also to have such hard-working district council members who understand the importance of not just our voices, but also the voices of our youth, and what it means for them to see people just like them engaging in everyday life. So, thank you very much, we appreciate it, and we thank you for this honor.
Great. Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas Fresno Real Pride LGBTQ Film Festival began its journey in the Central Valley in 1990 in order to bring diversity and uplift stories of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community. And whereas the Fresno Real Pride LGBTQ Film Festival enriches our culture landscape by providing a forum for a better understanding and appreciation of the LGBTQ community through the exhibition of films and cinema. And whereas it is our honor to recognize the importance of the Fresno Real Pride LGBTQ Film Festival, their all-volunteer Board of Directors, volunteers, advisors, and community sponsors, and reaffirm our office's commitment to diversity. And now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and City Council does hereby encourage the Central Valley community to celebrate this film festival in solidarity, and does hereby recognize the week of September 18th through the 22nd as Real Pride Film Festival Week in the City of Fresno.
Okay, folks, next, I call these Survivor moments. In Survivor, the TV show, they have these blind sides, so you're about to witness one, so Member Brettafield and I and the mayor are going to make a presentation, so hold on.
Mayor, come on up. Council President Capriolio and Mr. Pierce, come on up. It's a special day and a special privilege for us to honor Jeremy Pierce. He didn't know he was going to be honored today, so this is a surprise for him. He thought he was coming to talk about homelessness, that's what we told him, but it's a special honor. Let me tell you a little bit first about my relationship with Jeremy. I came to know Jeremy because he and I decided to run for this seat, and I remember meeting him for the first time at Starbucks, and he said something that I never forgot. He said, "I'm in the business of making people happy," and that is exactly what he does. He is a tribute artist to somebody I love, I know he loves, which is Elvis Presley, and Paul. Love Elvis Presley, and of course Jeremy loves it, and he's turned it into a career. And he's phenomenal. He's been in the community for a long time performing, he's made a lot of people happy, and that's why I wanted to honor him today, because he's done this for several decades, never missed a show. You'll hear about it, and I've gone to his show, and he really is a great tribute to the man, to the man that we all love, who left us many years ago way too early, but has had a tremendous influence on all of our lives. And Jeremy and I, as I said, we campaigned against each other. This guy's a fighter, threw the punches, we went back and forth at the end of the day. I was fortunate to win, but he fought hard, and he wanted this seat because he loves this community, and he wants to make a difference. And fact is, he's been making a difference for decades now, and he will continue to do so, and that's why I wanted to honor him. We have become friends ever since that time. We laugh a lot about the campaign, he and Diane, myself and Susan, we spent a lot of time together and have become very close. And that's really the way it ought to be, because at the end of the day, we're all people, we're all one community. And so this is a privilege for me to honor you, Jeremy, today for all that you've done in the city, in our community, and I know your friends, Mayor Brand and Council President Capriolio, also want to recognize you.
Thank you. My first confession is, I am an Elvis fan. I do remember that campaign. There were some harsh things said in both sides, and I do like both candidates. But, you know, Jeremy, you bring a slice of culture and art to the City of Fresno. I've actually seen your show. You're one of the best tribute artists I've ever seen. I wish you the best. I know you do a lot more, and I know your wife Diane does a lot of stuff too, is well-respected in this community. Anything we can do to give you, you know, a little recognition and make this a little brighter city, I'm all for. Again, congratulations.
Well, here we are. When he started the campaign trail, I think I was one of your first consultants or someone you asked... you asked about. And I wasn't real sure, you know? I mean, he's an Elvis tribute expert, but campaigning is a little bit different. So I said, well, let's go try this out. So I went up to the door in my district to just give him a little introduction. Next thing you know, he's stealing the whole show. The people were wanting to know more about him. I'm going, hey, I'm the council member. He's the candidate. But they're more interested in you than me, which is a reflection of you and the type of person and personality that you have and how you impact people and have done so for so long. And your wife Diane is fantastic. I know she's your number one fan and will be forever. So I'm glad we're here. You turned eight shades of red. I've never seen Elvis turn red. And it was a pleasure to be here today with you and surprise you with this wonderful honor. You're the best.
Well, this was a surprise, so I don't have anything prepared, but I do want to thank you for this honor. I have tried to make people happy, whatever problems they may have come in with at each show for that one hour, to forget those problems. And music brings people together and it's been my honor to do this all these years and also to participate in the political process and to get to know these gentlemen and so many other great people in this community. What a fantastic community this is, so many wonderful people in it. And I'm proud to be from the valley. We travel all around the country, out of the country, but we always come home to the valley. Love this place, love the people. And just to wrap it up, thank you. Thank you very much.
Let me say, Diane is here. I'm going to call Diane up here too. And maybe somebody can use your phone to take pictures because this is truly a team, Jeremy and Diane. The Elvis Presley Show that Jeremy puts on does not go on without Diane. I mean, I've been to the shows several times. It's incredible. I encourage people to go. And again, I also want to recognize much of the community involvement he's done where he goes out to people, to some of the elderly facilities, makes them happy. It's a tremendous thing. And so I just want to congratulate you on that and Diane as well. So if you would, Clerk, please read the role.
Hey, Councilmember Brettafield, before you do that, Jeremy, congratulations. One last thing, can you sing "Love Me Tender" to Gary for us?
I second that motion.
I already did it in private.
Whereas Jeremy Pierce was born in Reedley, California on March 13th, 1975. And whereas Mr. Pierce turned his childhood fandom of Elvis into a full-time career, his first performance as Elvis was in 1983 at just eight years old for a local kids talent show in his hometown. And whereas Jeremy Elvis Pierce has performed over 4,000 Elvis shows. Hundreds of people attend these shows up and down the valley every month and he always comes home to Fresno. And whereas Mr. Pierce was voted one of the top 10 Elvis tribute artists in the world in Graceland Fan Poll in 2010. Thanks to the huge support from Fresno and the Central Valley, he also held the Elvis Trivia Champion Title in California for multiple years in the 90s. And whereas he amazed Elvis Memorabilia, collection that includes clothing, stage wear, personal artifacts, jewelry and much more. He currently owns the last Cadillac that Elvis ever bought and has been able to share it with hundreds of fans. His collection caught the eye of Jay Leno and was featured on an episode of the Jay Leno Garage Show. And whereas Mr. Pierce has participated with many local clubs and organizations to support important causes in our community. Mr. Pierce continues to be passionate about the homeless in crisis and wants to further solutions that are truly compassionate, that are truly, I'll put a line here, that are truly compassionate to the homeless and to our residents and business owners who are adversely affected by those who refuse services. And whereas Mr. Pierce joined Councilmember Gary Brettafield and worked hard to promote and support the national motto "In God We Trust" being displayed in the City Council Chamber. And now therefore be it resolved that on this day, the mayor and city council members of the city of Fresno wish to recognize and congratulate you on your extraordinary talent and popularity, your community involvement and declare today, September 19th, 2019, to be Jerry Elvis Pierce Day in the city of Fresno.
Now, thank you all for that fantastic ceremony experience. That was a lot of fun. So next we'll go to council member reports and comments. Anybody punched up? Member Sparza, you're up first.
Thank you, Council President. It's been a few weeks since we've met, so there's been a lot going on in the districts, but I just wanted to provide a few highlights. I do want to thank the East Fresno Kiwanis Club for inviting me to speak at their monthly luncheon this month. It was a great group of community advocates and volunteers and I really enjoyed my time there with them. Additionally, just last week, had a group of 18 volunteers. These are labor pre-apprentices getting training in different building trades. Had them volunteer to come out to Romaine Park and working with our Parks Department to clean up a lot there and clean up these plots that we're going to turn into a community garden. So I want to give a shout out and a thank you to Parks Department and these 18 volunteers. And we're going to continue with our partnerships to make that community garden happen out at Romaine Park. And of course, I did mention this, one of my previous council member comments, held a series of three town halls last week. Always great to get out in the district and new with the constituents. A great turnout. They range between 20 people to 80 people, depending which night you were there. I look forward to continuing to do that throughout my tenure here.
Thank you. Member Carbasi.
Thank you, Mr. President. So last night, I had the honor of attending an event honoring Peter Robertson of Fresno State. And in the course of his speech, he talked about the women that changed his life and impacted him. And speaking of that, we have the First Lady of District 6 here today. Susan, good to see you. And there is a woman that impacted my life a lot and that's my mother. My mother unfortunately lives in Toledo, Ohio, a city whose football team Fresno State trounced last year appropriately. But my mother is here today and that is my mother sitting in the center. Do you want to stand up for a second? So, thank you for being here, Mom, and I love you.
Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple announcements. I was appointed by the governor to his homelessness regional council and we did have our first meeting on September 6th in the city of Modesto. It was well attended. We had some of our local advocates from Fresno there. Very good discussion. We are going to continue that. We are having to have some very difficult conversations about housing as it relates to homelessness and how we're going to address the problem at the state level. But I'm just proud to be there to make sure that I am a voice for the valley and for the city of Fresno. Our next meeting's happening on September 27th, which is next Friday, and it's taking place in Los Angeles. So for those folks, I want to know, these meetings are open to the public and at least the first one was well attended and well structured in terms of the issues discussed. And so just proud to serve on that regional council. The other thing that I just wanted to announce, just as a save the date, it is going to be taking place next month, but I wanted to put it out there for the community. District 1 is having their Fall Festival at Inspiration Park and it's happening on Saturday, October 19th. It's going to be an evening event because we do have a movie screening that's going to be happening on that same day from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. So we invite folks to participate. Thank you.
Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President Capriolio. Just want to say thank you to the Parks Department, planning and permitting, for getting our BMX construction started. I know it's a lot of work and you guys have set plenty of other private construction projects, but I want to say thank you to staff for making that work. And then also, just to get an update from the mayor's office on the progress towards dealing with gun violence in our city, there was, I haven't seen an update since we last discussed it during the budget process. And then lastly, I want to thank Mr. Carbasi's mother. You have raised a scholar and a gentleman, so thank you for that. And he's a good addition to our council and to our city.
Thank you. Mrs. Carbasi, I join in that. It's obvious to all of us that you've done a great job raising this fine young man, graduate of Fresno State, fantastic rug salesman.
The only thing is she's not Mrs. Carbasi anymore, but that's okay. We won't get into that.
Sorry.
No, I'm just teasing.
Okay, I take back all those comments. I retract them and just, he's a welcome addition. It's been a busy month for me in District 4. I had the privilege of welcoming home the 20th Honor Flight at our airport. It's a sensational evening. We have 68 veterans come in last week and it's a moving experience and you all should try to come out there. The next one is in April and it's, just to show our appreciation for these veterans, these men and women that have made our country great. And they deplane, there's probably 350 to 400 really vocal supporters. I mean, they're cheering, we've got the honor guard, we've got cheerleaders, we've got bands, everything's happening. It's quite a celebration. It's like the Fourth of July and we do that every time they return home from their three-day adventure in Washington, DC. First time ever in District 4, we had Jamba Juice. They hosted its first ever smoothie with a cop. So we had a great time with them and the Northeast Police District Team. Thank them for their hard work and dedication and really related to a lot of people that came and shared a smoothie with us at the Cedar and Shaw. I wanted to thank my colleagues for joining me at the Sixth Annual Community Cultural Appreciation Day. I invite everyone to come next year. It's quite an experience. There's dance, there's food, all traditional cultural events that will educate you, enlighten you and have a lot of fun. Drawings, it was just a wonderful, beautiful day and we had a great time. Back to Fresno State. We've been very bold out there lately. I want to thank AT&amp;T. They awarded the Aspire Grant to Fresno State. The Construction Management Students put together a tiny office. You've heard of tiny homes? Well, now we have tiny offices as well. And that's an innovative thing at Fresno State. So thank you, AT&amp;T, for supporting the university. And congratulations to Dr. Castro, as I was mentioning earlier, all the things that happened at Fresno State. The latest is that they were ranked as one of the top universities in the entire country for having the lowest student loan debt. So we work very well with our students and we don't want to burden them with the debt when they graduate from that fantastic university. So job well done to all at Fresno State. And last but not least, don't forget, you need to come out and join the Red Wave. Saturday, September 21st, Fresno State takes on the Sacramento Hornets. It's a home game, so we need all of you out there in red and white and blues. So thank you for the opportunity to make those comments. So next we'll go to the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item on the consent calendar for discussion? If it is pulled, it will be discussed at 1:30. Member Brettafield.
Yeah, I just want to pull item 1D as in Delta.
Member Sparza.
I'll pull my own item, 1R. Want to provide some clarification for my colleagues.
Member Soria.
Thank you. I want to pull items 1E and F. I want to also just recuse myself on 1C. I don't think we need to pull. This is the Fresno City College. I don't know if my colleague down at the end also needs to do the same, but I believe that we need to recuse ourselves from the vote. And then lastly, I want to register an abstention on 1H.
Pardon me? I didn't hear you. Absent?
Abstention on 1.
Oh, abstention. I thought you said absent and I thought, well, you're here. Anyway, abstention on what number? Well, thank you. City Attorney on a recusal situation like that, thinking remain at the dais and just don't vote?
That's correct.
Okay. Want to make sure.
Yeah, I want to go ahead and do the same.
Okay, Members Sparza and Soria will recognize your recuse on 1C when that vote passes. So next, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar? Member Chavez, motion? Second by Member Arias.
Council President, I would like to register no vote on 1H. But approve the rest of the consent.
All right, we'll make a note of that as well. So anyone in the public wish to come forward and address this issue? This is the opportunity. You'll have three minutes to state your position or opinions. Seeing none, we'll come back. Is there any opposition?
Council President, can I just make a quick comment and maybe ask the administration on one item, real quick on consent? So I just, for appointment purposes, are all the appointments to the various committees of the city of Fresno have to be like people that live in the city of Fresno? Or are city of Clovis folks also allowed to be part of these committees? Like for example, the Disability Advisory Committee?
That's a good question. I think it, pardon me, I think it has to do with the bylaws of the committee and how they're set up, but I'm not certain. Which one are you asking about in particular?
I'm asking about the Disability Advisory Commission. Could we just check? I just want to make sure. I'm assuming that most appointments, we would want city folks that live in the city to be the representative, so if we can just double check.
I can check on that one in particular and get back to you.
Maybe City Attorney has.
We are checking on it.
So should we take it off and bring it back?
If you want to pull that item, we can check by 1:30.
We can check by 1:30.
That's fine with us.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Passes a 7-0 with the notes that we made earlier on recusing, abstentions and no votes. Okay, the ones that are pulled will be heard at 1:30. Next we'll go to unscheduled communication. I have a card here from David Love. And next will be Jamie Loza.
My name's David Love, number 4, Building 429. The first Mongshong, the only one from the Mong population. The 100, the 100 door. The heart on the mountain. We're talking about the politician, parlor, there are Mongshongs. Mongshong are all dark roles of Satan of Kokong. Kokong is known as Mongshong. At least the Mong population at 17. Within the people, there's a, two shadows of Satan's. The white shadow Satan, the gray shadow Satan, the dark shadow Satan. The social machines of Satan. The silver, silver line are all dark roles of Satan's. Watching all the way to Washington, DC. For Jesus heaven's well. Before I start, I'll start with those Mongshong dark roles of Satan's. There's this baby Satan, Jing Jong Mongshong at age 40. That's the head Satan of Mongshongs. They have used the white shadow of Satan. One of the three shadows of Satan. The white shadow, the gray shadow and the dark shadow Satan of people. To really kill the shaman gods, heaven. They have killed GP's Holy Spirit. They have killed the 17 of the Mong population's Holy Spirit with the white shadow of the Satan, of Mongshong's dark role Satan's spirit. Guys might be laughing at Satan Ministry. We're talking about Terry, the dragon of Satan, of dark roles of machines of Satan. That's working with those Mongshong dark roles of Satan's. That's working with those Mongshong dark role of Satan. Those Mongshong dark role Satan, their attention, what Terry, the drop ball of Satan. Or trying to run a white shadow of Satan into Jesus Heaven. They have killed Lord Jesus Christ's Holy Spirit the most. They're trying to kill the Jesus Heaven's Holy Spirit of, we're talking about. Just wait.
Mr. Love, thank you very much for your comments.
That's not enough.
Your time has expired.
I'll try to get about 10 minutes to 30 minutes to an hour.
Okay. Maybe we can take that up with another day or with the clerk's office.
Just wait. We're talking about.
Mr. Love. Mr. Love, I'm here. Mr. Love, you're good. Thank you. Thank you. Next will be Jaime Loza. You'll have three minutes after you give us your name and address.
Good morning. My name's Jaime Loza. I'm homeless. Council President, I apologize about last time. I said some very harsh things towards you, and I didn't know that there were other people's districts. So I apologize about my last time. Carbasi, welcome. Soria, the things I say to the Hispanics, it's not towards you. I have full custody to my two oldest for 11 years, so I know how to juggle career and watch my kids. We've got problems, and I love how they're washing down downtown. I love it. I love it. But they're not washing down East Side or Parkside or the Vadios, but the other districts look really nice. So off of Kings Canyon and Downtown and Parkside and East Side and West Side, you know, we need to get, I feel like the community needs to get on the businesses, because we pay taxes for the community to have workers to go out there and clean, but also, it is also going to be the responsibility of businesses out there to clean them streets. Are the homeless there? Yes. Are they urinating and leaving their crap on the floor because they ain't got no bathroom to go to? Yes! And it needs to get cleaned up. Or the city can put a bathroom out there for the homeless to use. I go to McDonald's. But anyway, okay, other people don't. So the, so it needs to get cleaned, washed. Chavez, okay, it needs to get cleaned, okay? Businesses need, people need to get harder on businesses. Asparza, I'll do a research on you later. I'm pretty sure these two right now, okay? But it's not funny. It's disgusting. This is disgusting. Are you guys out there just to talk? Or are you guys there to represent the Hispanic community, okay? East Side, Parkside, West Side, okay? It needs to get cleaned up, just like Downtown's being cleaned up right now as we speak. Thanks, Council President. It's not even your jurisdiction, and you got that done.
Good job.
You guys have a nice day. I don't need the three minutes.
Anyone else in the public wish to come forward? You have three minutes to address the council. Please give us your name and address.
Here's my card after that.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Jonas Paulus. I am a homeless veterans advocate. On the ground, unpaid for four years. I love what I do, became a passion. No veteran should be laying on the concrete. We would be speaking German or Russian right now for them, for those heroes. So we need to treat them. All of us need to get involved. They have severe PTSD. They have to wait nine to six, six to nine months to get treatment. That's a little too long. Within the last four years, I lost a lot of them. And I just want to thank you for the temporary shelters, our hard work with Des Martinez and all of you that I met. And Mike, I'm going to meet you next. Welcome to our council. Yes, it's a start, but now with these temporary shelters, we need the Housing Authority and the VA give those head vashes, and let's go into permanent. Because all these failed policies of the past, that's why we're in crisis. All of your districts, look around, look what you see. Those numbers have multiplied this year alone. And thank God for these shelters, and low barriers are helping, come as you are, especially with PTSD if you have a dog and a cat. That's the only companion they have because they're disconnected from their families. And we need to have compassion, you know, and we can do more if we work together with the county and get that street to home that the mayor has, get that going, because it'll be a great start. We just don't want to do a name change and nothing gets done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? This is the opportunity for the community to be involved. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the, that portion of our meeting. I want to go to, since we're still early before our 10 o'clock, let's move to General Admin, 3A, authorized the city manager and the chief of police regarding $696,000-plus. So please sponsor this. Chief Hall, I think this is your debut at city hall on an issue like this. This is number 3A under General Admin, followed by 3B, which is along the same lines. I know I want to get you out of here early because you have so much to do.
You're moving pretty quickly through this.
Well, I want to get you, get you going.
Well, good morning, Council President and member of the council, Chief Andy Hall with Fresno Police Department. I'm here to request permission to accept a two-year contract with the Fresno Fair to provide policing services at the Big Fresno Fair. The total amount for the contract for two years is $696,762,000.
Motion to approve. Chief, second.
This provides policing for both fairs. This year's fair is a 13-day fair, which is a little more expensive, and then next year's fair is a 12-day fair. This just provides policing on the inside of the fair. We've been doing the Fresno Fair for probably the last 20 to 25 years, and we have a very good relationship with the fair board. They provide, they really spare no expense for security. And in fact, this year, we went to them and asked for walkthrough metal detectors, and they're providing them at all gates this year. So we're pretty pleased about that. We think we're going to have a.
Fantastic. We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the public wish to address this? Please come forward.
Yeah, Frank.
All right. Thank you, Chief Hall.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that comment. Anyone else have a comment from the public? We'll close the public portion. And member Soria, followed by member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a question for Chief. Chief, could you just tell us a little bit if there are any impacts? Because I know that we'll be contracting 6,214 hours of law enforcement services, and so I want to make sure that there are no impacts to the service that our regular residents are expecting us to give them when it comes to policing because of the contract.
Just to give you a little background, the Fresno Fair is the single largest multi-day event in the, in the City of Fresno. Over 600,000 people will go through the gates over those 13 days, which represents the entire population of Fresno. We have minimum staffings for all the policing districts and in patrol, and those will not be impacted. Those are always staffed first. So as far as responding to police calls for service, there'll be no impact. There will be added presence of police services outside the fair because of the recent incidences that have occurred throughout, well, in California as well as other states. You will see additional police presence around the fairgrounds, and that's sure that people are not only safe inside the fair, but they're also safe coming to and from their vehicles. So there will be proactive services, police officers, which is included our motorcycles, our bicycle officers, our canine, and some of our special response teams that will be assigned to the perimeter of the fair, but this will not impact the normal day-to-day patrol services.
So there'll probably be additional folks out there in that area, which is good.
You'll probably see more officers this year than you've probably ever seen on the exterior of the fair.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Member Arias.
Chief, I want to expand on that conversation. So the contract, we are charging the fairground board for the officers inside the fair, but not for the officers in the perimeter. Are we absorbing those through overtime?
No. Some of our officers are paid what's called a flex pay, which allows us to, they give a little extra stipend for us to flex our hours. And so we utilize that to adjust our hours to be at the fair. So there will not be overtime cost on the outside.
But the additional presence and officers that we're doing at the exterior of the fair, are we absorbing that cost? Are we charging the fair for that cost?
We provide policing services for the exterior of the fair. Very similar to the Women's Conference, on Tuesday, we provided additional police services at no charge to the event. Many of our marches and our parades, the Pride Parade, MLK, as well as the Memorial Day Parade, we provide policing services that we do not charge to the event staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Brettafield.
Chief.
Hi.
Hi. I'm just curious, why are sheriffs, the sheriff department not involved? Why is it always PD?
We do, we do work with the Sheriff's Department as well as CHP on the outside of the fair, but our contract policing is just provided on the inside, and that was just the relationship we developed with the fair board. They felt more comfortable with the policing services provided by the city police rather than the county.
Okay. Thanks.
Member Carbasi.
Chief, thank you for your work on this. You know, these community events, especially the fair, generate a lot of economic positive impact, so hopefully that increases our tax base, which allows us to provide important services like police and fire. And forgive me if this sounds rhetorical, but you know, in the next budget, when it comes through, if we were to actually this time provide funding for more police officers and CSOs, wouldn't that help your department when it comes to community events and, you know, having contracts, things like that?
Providing contract services?
I mean, with everything. Wouldn't hiring more police officers help you?
Well, of course.
Again, I know it sounds rhetorical, but I just want to emphasize that.
I'm not going to turn down additional police officers.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. It's like us just turning down additional parks.
We have a motion by member Chavez, second by myself. Is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. Thank you. Chief, don't go far. 3B, actions pertaining to the 2020 Selective Traffic Enforcement Grant, $700,000. The floor is yours.
Thank you. This is a $700,000 grant that we were awarded by the California Office of Traffic Safety. This is generally an annual grant that we received from the Office of Traffic Safety. We probably received it probably for the last 15 years. Really is the backbone of our traffic safety program, and it varies on the amount. It can go anywhere from 500 to a million dollars, depending on what kind of services we're providing for the, for the grant in the state of California. This grant mainly focuses on DUI enforcement and DUI operations, but there is an educational component in there that allows us to go to the schools and interact with the kids as far as traffic safety and DUI safety. For this year, we are asking the council to appropriate, let me get it here, $525,000 for this fiscal year. With the remaining, we'll come back to the council for the remainder fiscal year '21.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wish to address this? Please come forward. Seeing none. Motion by member Chavez, second by me. Is there any opposition? Oh, well, member Arias.
Chief, one of the complaints I get in, from the constituents, is the location of DUI checkpoints. There seems to be the perception that a lot of DUI checkpoints are designated for South Fresno, but you don't see DUI checkpoints near a basketball game, Save Mart Center concert, or a Bulldog football game, when we know that there's a lot of alcohol consumption taking place and a huge police presence. Can you provide us just an explanation or how you determine where to do DUI checkpoints and what the rationale you use?
There's a, council member, there's a lot of laws on where we can put a DUI checkpoint. In addition to the laws that we have to have data that shows a concentration of DUIs, in addition to that, we also have, look at the traffic safety flow. We can't, we can't have cars coming in at 60 miles an hour to a checkpoint. So we do have to have traffic calming techniques, and we look at the intersection and we evaluate whether it's suitable for a checkpoint. But to answer your specific question is, we ensure that we rotate our checkpoints in all five policing districts evenly, and I'm available to provide that data to anybody.
Can you just provide us a memo with the last two years of the locations of DUI checkpoints?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I think the Ingersoll decision, if you have time to look it up, sets forth all those parameters for checkpoints, and we have to abide by that. I'm very familiar with that with my practice of law. All right, screen, member Carbasi. You're up again.
Well, one thing I can say is, as a former Fresno State student, I can tell you that there were always checkpoints around the games.
All right. So we have a motion by member Chavez, seconded by me. Any opposition? Passes 7-0. We'll go back to the timed items now. Thank you, Chief, and your staff. Okay. So we have 10 o'clock item hearing to vacate a portion of District Seven. This is Public Works.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by member, asparza, second by member Chavez.
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Oh, you're lucky today.
Yeah, well, yeah. Good morning, Council President, council members and staff. I'm Jason Cammott, Chief Servier, the Public Works Department. I'm here to ask the council to open the required public hearing for a portion of East Divisadero Avenue between Blackstone Avenue and North Abbey Avenue. This hearing was set by resolution of intent 1132-D, which was approved by consent on August 22nd, 2019. The vacation is being requested by Vegan Incorporated on behalf of McDonald USA LLC, and the purpose of this vacation is to satisfy a condition of approval for development permit number P18-1459. It will accommodate removing excess right-of-way that has, currently has existing improvements within that boundary. So at this time, I would ask council to open the required public hearing for discussion, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public wish to address this? Please come forward now. You'll have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close that. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. Thank you. 10:05 item, a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinances to annex territory in District Four. This is Public Works. Hey, Scott, welcome.
Good morning, Council. Scott Moser, Public Works Department. This is a CFD annexation hearing for a residential subdivision, project proposed by Woodside Homes. The ballots are in from the landowner affirmatively requesting the annexation. This will fully cover the maintenance cost for curbs, gutters, paving, landscape, lighting at max taxes $764 per lot. Staff would recommend to open the hearing and then annex project into CFD 11.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone in the public wish to address this? This is the open part of the hearing. Seeing none, we'll come back up here. It's my district. I make a motion to approve, seconded by member Chavez. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes 7-0. Thank you. Okay, we're going, we're going too fast. Okay, we have to go back to General Admin, and we will go to item 3D as in David, and this is actions pertaining to award of a service contract, and that is transportation. Item 3D, yes. Oh, go back to that. Good morning. Anybody from transportation? All right, we'll readdress that later.
Can we go back to maybe the 10:05, the second item, and then we'll get somebody from transportation here?
That's fine. Okay, 10:05.
10:05, number two.
On page 11?
Sorry?
Page 11, 10.
Got you.
Yeah.
Well, six on mine, but.
Sorry.
Hearing to adopt resolutions to annex territory in District Three. Public Works, morning.
Thank you, Council President, council members. Scott Moser, Public Works Department. This is a requested annexation into community facilities, District Number Nine, in Council District Three for light industrial project, development permit approved for Don Pickett and Associates. This will cover the maintenance cost of concrete, curbs, gutters, and lighting, and it's $1,778 annually for that maintenance. We do have the ballot and would again request, recommend that you open the hearing and adopt the findings such that it can be annexed into the district. the findings such that it can be annexed into the district. Staff's available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you, we will open that hearing to the public. Anyone wish to address this item? Item two of 10:05 agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close that. District Three, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve, but I do have a question. Director, can you just tell us in layman's terms what this item does for the benefit of the general public?
Absolutely. What this does for the general public is that the property owner in the business really bears the cost of maintenance so that it does not put that burden upon the general taxpayer. So it takes care of new amenities that are being developed and built for that project without, again, affecting the city general fund or other, other public resources.
And in general, what's the description of the project being developed?
This, this is, again, just a, it's just a light industrial site. Don Pickett generally develops shell-type buildings and then just with various, various businesses and tenants.
Then so you were housing?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Screen is clear, we've been out to the public. With that, we have a motion and a second, is there any opposition? Passes seven zero. Next, we have 10:05, item three, hearing to adopt resolutions regarding annexing property in District Three. Is that continued?
Council president, I believe that was announced by city clerk, is being continued to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. That puts us at 10:10, hearing to approve items relating to granting a non-exclusive franchise for roll-off collection services, Public Utilities business sponsor. Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning, council. Jerry Schuber, Assistant Director, Department of Public Utilities. As with the past 24 appellants, we're, that we brought to council, the item before you today is to open the hearing for the approval of H.D. Matthews demolition and excavation to be added to the City of Fresno's non-exclusive roll-off franchise list. This is the third and final step in the process of adding the appellant to the list. The first was a bill for introduction, which came to council on 7/18/19. The second was a resolution of intention presented to council on September 19th of 2019. And the final step is the hearing and adoption by council to allow H.D. Matthews to begin performing services within Fresno city limits. Staff urges the approval of the new non-exclusive roll-off franchise, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Next, we'll go to the public, is there any comment from the public on this item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close it, back to the dius, Member Arias.
Thank you, I do have a question that I'll make a motion to approve. Legal counsel, can you briefly explain to us why it is that we have to go through a public hearing process just to simply add one vendor to a list of potential vendors when it comes to these, this department?
The charter allows the council to grant non-exclusive franchises for these types of things and sets forth a process. This is simply the process that we have to follow.
And non-exclusive just means that they're one of many vendors that we'll be using, correct?
Correct, we're not allowed to award it only to one.
Understood, thank you, and with that, make a motion to approve.
Seconded by member Arias motion, member Soria seconded, is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes seven zero. 10:15, right on schedule, folks, continued hearing pertaining to the airport land use compatibility plan, planning and development, this is in my district. Good morning, Mr. Z.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Dan Zack, Assistant Director with the Planning and Development Department. We're here today to recommend the adoption of a finding of no certainty of environmental impact, a finding of consistency between the city's land use plans and regulations and the airport land use compatibility plan, and a bill for a text amendment adjusting priority of plans and findings for certain projects. So, the Airport Land Use Commission is a body that adopts and mends an airport land use compatibility plan for several airports in Fresno County, including three within the city of Fresno.
Are we addressing all those or just the city of Fresno?
What's that?
Are we addressing all the airports or just this one?
So we are, today are only addressing the three in Fresno.
Okay, very good, I'll make a motion to approve, seconded by member Chavez. Any questions by the public that wish to come forward, address this, please do so? Seeing none, member.
For clarification, we, we've already been complying, I mean, planning has already been sort of adjusting as these projects come and they're within that sphere, right?
Correct, so we are.
Formality.
We, we are incorporating their plan by reference, and whenever there's a conflict between what they require and what we require, we defer to that plan and adjust projects accordingly. Until we make this finding of consistency, though, each individual development project that's anywhere near one of the airports has to actually go to Airport Land Use Commission, and so it can cause up to a 60-day delay. So this will allow us to approve the projects ourselves without that extra delay, and the only thing after this that would go to Airport Land Use Commission is rezonings and general plan amendments, but not regular development projects. So this will help us be very timely with development projects. But we'll be fully consistent with their plan.
Yeah, sounds good.
Member Arias.
I just want to go on the record that I think the Airport Land Use Commission made a significant overreach when they adopted their plan, that would essentially require the city to rezone half the parcels in the whole city, and that has had a detrimental impact on projects in my district because of the findings and expansion of their sphere related to Chandler Airport. We have gone from being able to build more density to having to leave, you know, single-story units when we're clearly in a housing crisis. So I just want to say thank you and express my frustrations on the record, that the Land Use Commission is a pretty important body that has very little scrutiny and a spotlight, and that their decisions have significant impacts if they're not thoughtful about the cities that they represent.
The screen is clear, we have a motion and a second, is there any opposition? Passes seven zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we're ahead of our timed items, so we'll go back to general admin. That would be actions pertaining to the purchase of RC catatonic polymer for regional wastewater reclamation facility. That's item 3C, and this is.
Good morning, council, Mike Carver, Department of Public Utilities. This item pertains to the purchase of a dewatering agent used in the wastewater process, a catatonic polymer. Two actions, one is to reject proposals on a prior solicitation for polymer purchase, and the second action would be to approve the two-year cooperative purchase agreement in the amount of $1,830,000 per year with SNF Polydine Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion by member Arias, seconded by member Chavez, anyone in the public wish to address this? Please come forward, you'll have three minutes to address the council. Not on this issue? All right. Good to see you. Okay. All right, seeing none, we will come to the council, we have a motion and a second, the screen is clear, is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes seven zero. Okay. We're still ahead of schedule, so we'll go to item 3D, as in David, actions pertaining to an award of service contract.
Motion to approve.
And that's transportation.
Made a motion to approve.
A motion by member Esparza to approve, seconded by member Chavez.
Let the record show is member Arias, don't confuse me for that character.
No, he's seconded the motion. You can third it, if you need a little time. But you're not, but if you want to. Okay. More spotlight, are you okay? You all right? All right, thank you. Hi, Mr. Barfield, how are you?
Good morning, I, I have no presentation now that you've made a motion and a second.
I know you stayed up all night working on that. Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you, director.
So, anyone in the public wish to address this? Please come forward. Seeing none, any opposition? Passes seven zero. Thank you, Greg. All right. So item 3E, actions pertaining to four funding agreements. This affects districts one, three, five, and seven, Public Works and the Planning Department. 3E, good morning.
Good morning, council president, members of the council, my name is Randall Morrison, Assistant Director with Public Works Department. The item you have before you is staff's recommendation for council to approve four funding agreements totaling $1,223,079 with Fresno County Transportation Authority for Measure C Transit Oriented Development Projects. The projects include the Kings Canyon Transit Oriented Development Connectivity Plan, the Transit Oriented Tower Project, the Fancher Creek Trail Project, and the Merced Street Reconnection Project. This item also includes the, a resolution for the Third Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 2019-133, appropriating $583,200 for the three Public Works projects. And staff will be available if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion by member Chavez, seconded by member Arias. Anyone in the public wish to come forward? This is our community opening time, so if you have some comments, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll come back to the dius, member Soria.
Thank you, council president, just have a quick question, what's the timeline for these projects? I'm curious to the one in the tower.
We don't have a nailed-down schedule just yet, once we get past the funding agreements, then we'll have the authorization to start on the project. On the tower project, we're going to initiate design right away and then be able to move forward into construction. Once we establish that, we could sit down with your office and go over the schedule.
Perfect, is it going to take one year, two years, three years, do we know?
It'll probably, probably take a year or two to develop the plan and get out to construction.
Okay, perfect, yeah, I'd love to sit down and, once you guys have all that going, so that we can notify the community. Thank you.
Member Arias.
Assistant Director, for the benefit of the public, I know it's on the backup material, but can you briefly describe each project?
Sure. The Kings Canyon Transit Oriented Development Connectivity Plan will look at the BRT corridor along Ventura and Kings Canyon and establish, it'll, it'll look at development and the impacts along that corridor. The Transit Oriented Tower Project is a reconstruction of the Van Ness and Olive intersection and improving that bus stop at that location, narrowing the street to accommodate a better pedestrian-friendly transit stop. And then the Fancher Creek Trail Project is, it's a new trail segment from Clovis to Argyle, it borders the FID Fancher Creek Canal and then the Fancher Creek Development. And then the Merced Street Reconnection Project is just a design-only portion, so we're going to develop the engineering plans, specifications, and estimates, and that'll set us up for future funding to get the right-ofway and construction dollars to deliver that. And that's reconnection of Merced Street from H Street to Congo Alley, and then also a portion of Broadway.
Great, thank you. With that, I call for the question.
Call for the question before the comments, but anyway, with that in mind, we have a motion and a second, is there any opposition? Passes seven zero, thank you. 3F, a bill for introduction, amending the uncodified ordinance, this is Public Works.
Good morning, my name is Jill Gormley, the Traffic Operations and Planning Manager with the Public Works Department, and we have here a bill for introduction to amend our special speed survey ordinance. It's an annual amendment that we make to look at the posted speed limits to make sure that they are in compliance with the California Vehicle Code and post-speed limits that are not posted along roadway segments. And this year, we have also lowered the speed along 17 roadway segments throughout the city. I'm available to ask questions if, if there are any.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone in the public wish to address this? Please come up now, you have three minutes. Back to the dius, member Soria.
Hey Jill, just had a question, I know that you just mentioned that there are some areas where you lowered the speeds. What areas and how did you guys designate lower speed limits in those areas?
The roadway segments, they're throughout the city, so what we do is we survey roadway segments on a, on a regular basis, and it's based on speed data that we collect along the roadway segments, and if it validates lowering the speed limit, we, we can do that. So what we do is we survey cars, and it is an 85th percentile methodology for setting the speed limit, which means that if 85% of the speed that the drivers are driving along that segment are going X speed or below, we're able to post it at that speed. And so if it was, say, 35 miles per hour and we surveyed it and it was now 31, we're able to post that at 30. So the segments are throughout the city, and they, they were upheld by the speed surveys.
And so, signs have gone up or signs will go up with the new speed limit, or how does that work?
They have already gone up.
They have already gone up. Have we explored, I know that I've gone, some concerns from constituents in lowering speed limits around schools. I know that cities like Sacramento recently adopted an ordinance where they significantly lowered speed limits. I know that there are schools in my district, like right off of Palm Palm, people fly down there, and there's several schools like Fresno High, Hamilton, and so forth, where the traffic is just going way too fast. Have we explored options to lower speed limits and been intentional about making the surrounding streets around schools safer?
So in a school district, we do have the ability to post the speed limit at 25 when students are present, so if that, on those streets that you're mentioning, if that's not already done, you can contact me and we can make sure that we go out there and, and see if we can do that on those streets. There's a, there's a distance around the schools that we're able to post it for 25 miles when school is in session. But the speed limit would be set when school's not in session on, on this survey.
Okay, perfect, so then we'll go ahead and do that, and I think the second piece is enforcement, because the signs only do so much. The second piece is making sure that we have our traffic units out there, especially during the school year, but, okay, thank you.
Member Carbasi.
Couple questions, thank you, by the way, for being here. Okay, so I have on the list, for example, on page two, Browning from Marx to Van Ness. Now, on this list, are some of, so we obviously have some speed limits that are being lowered, are any being increased as well?
We did not increase any speed limits.
Okay. So, with Browning, for example, it's now 30 miles an hour. It just so happens that when I was walking the neighborhood on the west side, because it's a long street, the west side has speed bumps, I don't recall, I think that the east side does, but people basically, in order to divert from the main traffic, they'll blast through those streets, and I got a lot of complaints about that. Would it be possible, is there any way, let's say, to go from all the way from 30 to 25 instead, or you said there are legal limits where we can't do that?
We have the ability to raise or lower the speed limit five, five miles per hour based on our surveys, so if, if it came back at 32, we can post it at 30, we can go 35, but we can't really go down to 25.
Right, but, right, and there are no increases right now? There are no increases right now?
There are no increases.
I have one request, in the future, I know there's a lot on this list, can you signify what district it's in?
We can look into that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Arias.
Thank you, council president, as a person who's received a speeding ticket on Palm Avenue, this is a little personal to me, but more in general terms, what do we do to communicate to folks that we've lowered the speed limit in any of these streets besides this annual approval? Because we get speeding tickets based on a lower speed limit versus raising speed limits in streets. What's your, kind of this plan to tell the general public besides posting signs that the speed limits have been reduced in any given street?
I, I don't know that we have a plan to, to advertise the, besides this meeting and this, this update every year, to advertise the lowering of the speed limits, we, we do post the signage out there when we make changes.
So, if we change a speed limit by, if we reduce the speed limit by five miles per hour, are police officers at least giving folks warnings for the? folks warnings for the, you know, first couple of weeks, first month when the limit is reduced? Or do we just continue to, you know, give tickets out?
I can't answer that question.
Chief, can you address that for me? I don't want to get a, you know, swath of complaints because we reduce speed limit in a street and then tell anybody about it.
Yeah, generally, when we're made aware of a change in the speed limits, especially when it's reduced because of all the issues that you just cited, we'll generally issue... We'll go out and we'll put a heavy presence out there, but we issue warnings. And so we get them to slow down and acknowledge the speed.
All right, perfect. And my suggestion is, I know our folks use Twitter and Facebook quite a bit. It would be nice if we just, you know, push it out to local media and to social media on what are the major streets where we reduce speed limits. That way, folks have multiple warnings of the reduction of speed limit. Thank you.
Member Arias, when you're doing 70 on Palm, I don't think that's going to matter. You're going to get that ticket, buddy. Anyway, Member Esparza.
I don't think Member Arias's car goes that fast.
As a hybrid, you're probably right.
So last week, throughout my town halls, I had... Every one of the town halls, my constituents had issues with speeding, not just, I mean, somewhere near school zones, and it was primarily throughout residential neighborhoods. Or you have neighborhoods that have stop signs, and there's happens to be sort of one throughway where folks tend to speed. I know, you know, notwithstanding speed bumps, which don't seem to be a possibility at the moment, what are some other... What are some of the methods we are using to sort of control speed, control traffic, or not just on our main boulevards, but residential neighborhoods as well?
So we, as you mentioned, we're not... Undulations or speed bumps are not really in our toolbox right now for helping that issue along. So what we do is we will go out there and we will survey the street when we get a request or a comment that they're speeding through the neighborhoods, and we'll look at what we can do. Is it... Our first kind of reaction is we will ask PD for some sort of enforcement out there if it's multiple requests or it seems to be a big issue. We've looked at, you know, doing... Bumping out the curbs, adding different types of treatments to the roadways to maybe channelize or narrow the roadways down so that cars can't go as fast as they would like to on the streets. It is an issue that we struggle with and that we're constantly looking for solutions to.
What about... So I know bumps obviously are not in the toolbox. What about dips?
I believe when we looked at the dips, it was the same type of reasoning why we are not allowing speed bumps throughout the city.
Which for the record was?
I'm sorry?
Which for the record, that reasoning was?
There, back in 2002, 2006, there was a... It's called Rackham Reasonably Accessible Control Measures, I believe, and it was a policy that was adopted by the council for air quality reasons.
Some of the reason for that was emergency vehicles going over the bumps, double bumps in particular, as well as, you know, police fire, first responders. And it was an issue of pollution that was also addressed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Member Carbasi.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Is this time-sensitive?
Is it time-sensitive?
Right.
No.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a motion, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
To continue this item to the next meeting.
Motion and a second. I don't think there's any opposition. Is that agreeable with you? You'll be available next week?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, we'll do that with this item. We'll settle over for next week for conclusion and a vote. Okay, we're on the time clock again, so now we can go to 10:35 item. Scheduled communications, I know we deleted some. So these are scheduled communications as compared to unscheduled communications that we heard earlier. So we have Mary Padilla. Mary, are you here? Okay, we'll go on to Jason Sisk to discuss the IRS Submission Processing Site. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so I've prepared some talking points, and I know I have a three-minute section, so I don't know if it's preferable if I just read through that right quick. And then I have some handouts for reference for you guys if you want also related to the subject. Do you guys have a preference or...
Well, you can... We'll take your handout, and then if you have a presentation within that three-minute period, we'd be more than happy to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll start off, so most of you know, and it's been kind of advertised, but they plan to close our IRS Submission Processing Center here in Fresno by September 2021. And this is a plan that they've had in the process for years whereby Cincinnati just closed effective as of this month, and we're next in 2021, followed by Austin in 2024. They would... They'd only have two submission processing centers left, which is in Ogden, Utah, and Kansas City, Missouri. And the problem is, so we're the largest in the country, and at our facility, we routinely work our own work plus work of those other sites that they can't get done, so they send it to us to do on top of our own. So we're slated to lose about 3,000 jobs because of this. So this is basically a nonpartisan issue that I'm hoping the city council can get together and help us with our elected congressional and senate representatives to try to stop. The facility on 5045 East Butler, where we've been since like 1970 or '72, was put up for sale once IRS announced this plan in 2016. The building was put up for sale initially, and there was an article ran in the Business Journal and maybe some other places. I put that there just for reference. Eventually, I was told it was for sale for $47 million, and what I want to convey is that the real reason... You'll hear some stuff about the electronic filing rate having to do with the reason why we don't need as many submission processing sites as we once did, but that's kind of misleading. And the same thing I tell our congressional reps. And the reason for that is that our individual tax returns increased by 1% between 2015 and 2016 from 85% to 86% electronic filing rate. And even at the 86% electronic filing rate, we're pretty much capped out unless Congress mandates it. There are multiple reasons, which I won't go into here, why I don't think they're going to mandate it or that they really could. So, but in the crux of the matter here is that we want to try to get help for maybe to have GSA purchase that building if it's not sold. IRS can't confirm to us, or they don't admit if they can, that the building has been sold or not. But it was up for sale for $47 million, and the company that owns it now is out of Arizona. And so we're... The lease is through September 2021. What we pay in lease, there's approximately $8.3 million a year. So even if we paid $47 million, I have people that, you know, think we could have purchased it for a little bit less than that, significantly less than that. But at any rate, we're going to pay $25 million plus towards that $47 million for-sale price anyway in the next three years and have nothing to show for it, and our 3,000 jobs forevermore goes out the door. And the part that adds insult to injury is that most of the time when you hear jobs leaving California, they're leaving because they can do the labor cheaper somewhere else. That is not the case here. Federal employees have what they call a locality pay. It's part of their pay that's factored in, and we're under, here in Fresno and the surrounding area, we're under what they call the rest of the U.S. So the locality pay is the lowest in the country, and it won't be done cheaper somewhere else as far as the labor piece. So really, what it comes down to is the real estate and lease cost. And because of the restricted budget that is constantly for federal agencies used as kind of a political issue, if you will, they underfund the agencies, and then the agency in order to operate and meet its mission has to either look at reducing labor or real estate costs and lease costs. And so this building was a GSA... It was privately owned rather than a GSA-owned building. And so ultimately, Kansas City, and the reason why the work plans to go there, and that's a remaining site, that's an ex-postal facility that we moved into in 2007, and it's a GSA-owned building, so they can kind of control the lease cost. The problem that we're having is Austin, Kansas City, over the last three years have been unable to attract and retain the employees for these very type of positions.
Can you wrap it up, Jason?
Yeah. So we are, over the last three years, because of the plan, we can only hire temp seasonals. We are able to hire those at a better rate than what they are, and they're still offering permanent seasonal positions. And so we'd just like to bring that to you guys' attention. One other thing, they're building a new building at 700 P Street to house some of the IRS employees that are currently at this Butler facility, but they failed to request or negotiate for free parking, which they currently enjoy at the Butler facility. That's a 538,000-square-foot building with over 1,600 parking stalls. And so it's a huge impact to our local economy, and the state should not lose these jobs, and neither should Fresno and the surrounding Central Valley when they're not going to do it cheaper somewhere else, and the work itself will continue on.
Well, Jason, that's an excellent presentation. That would be tragic if we lost those jobs. And Member Carbasi is up first, and then we'll be followed by... I'm sorry. You're right.
District five.
It's District five.
Jason, thank you. We've spoken briefly about this. I'm very familiar with the property. I actually met with the company. About three executives flew in from Arizona. I have some inside information for you. But let's schedule a meeting and chat and strategize on that. And I'm very familiar, I have a number of residents that live in District five that actually work right across the street from there. And I have spoken with the federal government on what the plan is for transitioning, but I'd love to reach out to you and have a conversation and chat a little bit about that some more.
Yeah, that'd be appreciated. There's a lot more info that I could go over here that's quite eye-popping.
Member Carbasi.
Jason, I'm about to do something I never thought I would do. I'm going to defend IRS jobs. Full disclosure, my brother is a member of your organization, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so he's going to be impacted by this. But aside from that, how many jobs are we talking about losing?
We're talking about 2,800 to 3,000 jobs. Now, you'll read in there Congressman Costa and TJ Cox and our, both of our senators, Feinstein and Harris have wrote a letter to the IRS Commissioner about this, and, but they kind of framed it more in looking for continuing jobs as opposed to let's stop this and let's take a relook at it.
Right. So let me ask you a follow-up question. We have a facility in downtown. Now, how many of those jobs can be absorbed into that facility? Is there any talk about that?
That is the main, or I'm a customer service rep, and it's on 855 M Street on Kern and M Street. So that building, we have four floors there, which were fill, full already. They're coming in the middle of October, they've hired an announcement for 150 more. They're trying to pick up as many from Butler as they can, but that's a very different type job than what they do at the Submission Processing Site, and that job is not for everybody. And just real quick, within the last week or two, five people that had been picked up from the Submission Processing Area to that site were able to get sent back because they weren't going to be able to do that job.
Correct.
And so it's kind of misleading the Commissioner's response there, and we, let me put it this way, we don't see it that way as that it's being done and that it's being successful, per se.
All right. And you're really lucky that that Kings Canyon site's located in D5 because there's no greater champion for this than Councilmember Chavez.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. The screen is clear. If you'd like to speak with Daniel, he's on the team of Chavez, and they will...
Yeah, we're going to get your contact info, Jason, and Daniel will set up a meeting with you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Okay, Mary, would you like to come up and address the council, please? Name an address would be fine, and then you'll have the floor. Is it on? It is, okay.
Okay.
There you go.
I wanted to come and discuss, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss what I want to say, but in God's trust, all right, the nation God made in the beginning in 1776, the United States was founded as a nation, and nowadays, and you, we as a nation have forsaken gone so bad, it's not even funny. I'm 60 years old. I remember you could sit, have fun, and enjoy the evening. Nowadays, you're afraid to get sad. So I think we need to get guns out, totally out of God nation, and teach people how to abide by knowing Jesus. Now, two days ago, May, 30 years since I've been in this wheelchair, so I'm so grateful to Jesus for giving me another chance to live. I was brain-dead for two years. So God said, no, I'm not ready for you. I have work for you to do, okay? So I'm going to preach some consideration in what I'm asking for. It will only make God, city, and nation better if we are putting our trust foremost in God, not in people, not in money, not in anything, whether green or... Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, for being here and your comments. Appreciate it very much. Okay, that is our scheduled communication calendar this morning. So 10:45 is a hearing to consider a development permit, and this is planning and development. It's the corner of Dante and Bullard at District Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Cheryl Laninson with the Planning and Development Department. The item before you today is a recommendation to approve development permit number P190213. The proposed project pertains to a 64-unit multifamily residential gated development on the northeast corner of Dante and Bullard avenues. The proposed use is permitted by right and meets the required findings of the Fresno Municipal Code. The project is being brought before you, the council, as required by the conditions of zoning on the property. The staff has no new items to add to the previously submitted staff memo, and a presentation has been prepared, should you wish to hear it or if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
City staff, can you provide us a brief description of the project before us for the general public's benefit?
Yes. So it is a 64-unit multifamily residential gated development. It's an expansion of an existing apartment complex at Dante and Bullard, so they will be expanding and utilizing the same gated facility of the existing complex. It will... The design will be a similar design to the existing complex.
Member Carbasi.
I want to thank you for your time on this. I want to thank the residents of Northwest Fresno that actually emailed me in support of the project, and I move to approve.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone in the public wish to come forward and address the council on this item? This is the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Was there a motion by Member Carbasi, seconded by Member Soria? Is there any opposition? Passes seven zero. Okay.
Council President, are we able to handle the 10:30 item right now, please? We have a lot of folks in the audience for that. We have a lot of folks in the audience for that. The CAPRAS item?
Correct. All right. Actions pertaining to the program year 2018, CAPRAS report.
Good morning, Council President, members of the City Council. Jennifer Clark, Director of Planning and Development. Before we start, I just wanted to let the audience know that we have Spanish and Mong translators in the back. Could you raise your hands in the back if anyone needs translation services? This morning, we are pleased to present a summary of accomplishments from the last annual action plan covering the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. The CAPRAS or Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report is a requirement of the U.S. Department of HUD for receipt of funding. The process to identify needs and assess performance is a part of an ongoing cycle for both the five-year consolidated plan as well as each annual action plan. This report represents the fourth year of our five-year consolidated plan. Today, to present an overview of our accomplishments are our programmatic team, who I'm going to introduce at this time. Erica Castaneda will present on repair and rehab programs. Karina Nunes will report on the home program development projects. Melody Haig, embedded staff from Michael Baker International, will report on our homeless programming and capital projects. Austin Robinson and Alec Viberal, embedded staff for USANA Development, will report on public infrastructure, community facilities, public and community services under the CDBG program. And I'd also like to let you know that we have a number of direct service providers represented in the audience today. We are really excited to present the accomplishments over the past year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the manager of the program, Tom Morgan.
Good morning, members of the council. Tom Morgan, Housing and Community Development Manager. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report is the report on the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Act Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program. These programs are delivered by three city departments, including Planning and Development, Public Works, and the Fresno Parks and Recreation Services Department. Additionally, on the slide that I believe is on your monitor in front of you are 12 sub-recipient organizations that help us to deliver the programs here in the city of Fresno. With that, I want to turn our presentation over to Erica Estrada, excuse me, Castaneda, who is our home repair project manager, and she oversees both CDBG and home program activities.
Good morning. I'm Erica Castaneda, project manager for the Housing Division's home repair programs. In the last program year, the Housing Division and its sub-receipients, Habitat for Humanity, Self Help Enterprises, and Fresno EOC provided home repair programs to low-income owner-occupied households. Senior paint projects were completed by the Housing Division and Habitat for Humanity. The programs provided exterior paint and minor repairs for low-income senior households. The Housing Division also provided minor repair programs for low-income households to address health and safety repairs and code violations. As you can see in the first example, this home required extensive siding repairs and a complete roof replacement. Other repairs included water heaters and fencing replacement. Self Help Fresno EOC and Habitat also provided home repair programs to eligible homeowners to address code violations, health and safety repairs, including roofs, flooring, heating, plumbing, and accessibility improvements. A total of 40 projects were completed in the program year. The table lists the completions by program and applications pending on June 30. These programs are life-changing to many of the program recipients. We come across households that are living in substandard conditions, living without hot water for several months because the water heater is inoperable, or they haven't had heat for years, or have extensive electrical repairs that put the household in danger, or a homeowner with mobility issues that can't leave their home because they can't get down the front steps, or can't bathe properly because they can't step into the tub, or the homeowner that can see the sky from inside their home because the roof has been in need of replacement for years and now the interior has also deteriorated. Not only do these programs improve the quality of life for these households, they revitalize the neighborhood and preserve the city's housing stock. Karina Nunes will now continue with development.
I have some questions before we continue, if that's okay. So on the chart that you had up there on the home repair and housing rehab, so 40 were completed in the program fiscal year, is that correct?
Yes.
And so it says that there's 83 pending applications. So what does that mean? What are we doing to deal with those pending applications?
They're in different phases between the in-house programs that the Housing Division offers and then applications pending with our sub-receipients, which are Habitat, Self Help, and Fresno EOC.
So they're going to...they're projects that are taking place as we speak, or...
They're in different phases. They may be in the application process, they may be in the construction process, they may be in the bid process.
But all these at some point are going to be completed? That's what we expect out of the 80?
That's what we expect, yeah.
And then for the 40 of the program fiscal year, did we spend all of our money that we were projected to spend in the program year?
We do have some carryover money.
How much?
It's going into the next year. I don't have those exact amounts with me now, but I can provide that information to you.
And do we have a plan for what the carryover is going to be?
Yeah, we have people on the interest list waiting for programs.
Okay. And is that typical or that we have carryover? Is it that we need more staffing for it?
For the home repair programs, it is typical. You know, sometimes we have delays in the bid process or procurement delays, or it depends on when we get our funding agreements as well.
Okay. But we are meeting the timeline that we need to in order to spend the dollars down?
Well, we are working with our sub-receipients to get their agreement, the funding and their agreements expended.
But in terms of like what we...we're charged with within in-house, the stuff that we do, we are meeting those timelines?
We are a little...moving a little slow. We had a couple of retirements last year. We hired a new rehab specialist. He's been with us for almost two months, so we did have some delays.
So that should help it?
Yes.
But, okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment from the dais?
Karina Nunes, Project Manager, Housing Division.
Two new construction projects started during the program year. The first one was Habitat for Humanities Central Lots Project. In January of 2018, the city provided Habitat with 445,000 in home choo-to funds to construct three sweat equity houses in District one. One house will be three bedrooms, two baths, and two houses will be four bedroom, two baths. The houses are currently in construction and scheduled to be completed later this year. The estimated cost of the project is $1 million. The second project is Self Help Enterprises Annadale Commons. In March of 2019, the city provided Self Help Enterprises with just over 2.5 million in home choo-to funds to construct Annadale Commons, a 40-unit affordable senior housing project in District three. The project is currently underway and is expected to be completed by May 2020. The estimated cost of the project is 14 million. One Habitat project was underway during the program year at B and Amador. The project consists of new construction of four five-bedroom, two-bath houses in District three. The estimated cost of the project is 1 million with a completion date of August 2020. Also during the program year, 28 home-funded apartment properties were monitored for affordability, health and safety, and financial management. In all, a sampling of 1,957 units were reviewed for home program compliance. In addition, three multifamily project applications were evaluated under the state's low-income housing tax credit program. All three projects consisted of substantial rehabilitation of approximately 115 existing affordable rental units. And lastly, on January 17, 2019, the Housing Division released a notice of funding availability for approximately 1.7 million. In response to the NOFA, the city received five applications, of which three are being recommended for funding. Of those three projects, one is in District one and two are in District three. The agreements for those projects will be presented to council later this year or early next year. Melody Haig is up next.
Member Arias has a question.
Can we just touch on that last point you made? You'll be recommending when? Is that recommendation coming forward?
We'll bring them to council later this year or early next year.
Okay. And just a general question, why is it that most of the affordable housing projects take place in the southern part of the city? Do...are we asking providers to look at properties across the whole city?
Well, we release a NOFA, so they bring the project to us. It's not a request for proposals. We've done request for proposals in the past, but the division has not bought property for several years.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Melody Haig, Michael Baker Consultants. As part of the city's homeless initiatives, the city offers several programs to assist individuals with homeless services, homelessness prevention programs, and homeless facility improvements. These programs include emergency shelter grants, housing opportunities of persons with AIDS grants, home tenant-based rental assistance, and Community Development Block Grant. For the purposes of this table, homeless services are categorized in four different categories: overnight shelter, rapid rehousing, tenant assistance services other than housing and AIDS HIV supportive services. This table shows the breakdown of the categories along with the accomplishments of what was expected to be accomplished and what was actually accomplished so far. To further address this table, you can categorize these four categories into two main components, housing and services. The housing component includes both the overnight shelter and rapid rehousing tenant assistance. Overnight shelters provide a safe haven for domestic violence, homelessness, and those with HIV. The rapid rehousing and tenant assistance provides housing opportunities. The services component includes services other than housing and AIDS HIV supportive services. These services provide outreach and homeless prevention and supportive services. As you can see, we have been aggressive in meeting our annual targets. As part of our CBDG capital improvement funds, there are some of the projects that have been completed through our homeless facility improvement projects. We have the Marjorie Mason Center, Marjorie Mason Kitchen remodel, which included the remodeling of a kitchen, dining room, and pantry for the 120 safe bed house, providing additional space for individuals and upgraded amenities. This facility is a shelter for individuals and families that are homeless as a result of domestic violence. Marjorie Mason now has the capacity to accommodate 40...50 families in its dining and kitchen area. The next completed item is West Care Windows. West Care McKinley Plaza consists of two buildings with eight two-bedroom apartments for a total of 16 dwelling units for clients with substance abuse who lack safe, substance-free residence and are at the risk of becoming homeless. Improvements allowed the removal of 64-old damaged single-pane windows and the installation of new pane dual windows. This project provided energy efficiency through cost savings and improved the living environment for tenants living at McKinley Plaza. And then lastly, we have Pavarello House, HVAC. This project benefits approximately 600 people of homeless families and individuals that Pavarello House serves. This 30-year-old HVAC was originally the original unit since the 1980s. Its heating and cooling systems were inefficient and expensive to run. This project replaced heating and cooling units in Pavarello's administration building in an effort to reduce energy consumption by 20% and to provide cleaner air for those visiting and working at the facility. Next, we'll be presenting Austin Robinson and Community Facilities.
I do have some questions for you.
Okay.
Back on the performance slide, we are...it looks like we're underperforming in other services and in our individuals who have HIV. What's the reason for that?
I'm sorry, the services for HIV?
Correct. You expected 36 individuals to be served and 17 were served.
Correct. And at this point, the grant is not completed and therefore we are still in the process of completing those projects.
So you do expect to fully serve the 36 individuals that are funded for?
That's what's anticipated, yes.
And then on the facility improvements, I recognize the need to improve facilities, but why is it that we don't expect the organizations who serve these individuals to maintain their own facilities and to include that in their operational budgets that they submit for programming? Because from my perspective, public facilities are city-owned facilities, and I know we've had this conversation in the past, our parks facilities, for examples, are dilapidated and falling apart, but yet we're funding remodels of kitchens, windows, roofs of nonprofit organizations' facilities. Are they not allowed to include maintenance and improvements of their facilities when we give them operating and programming money? Director?
Yeah, so Councilmember, that is correct. So capital improvements cannot be included in the operational budget. So operation...so the programs are very scripted in terms of what kinds of services or what kinds of activities can be undertaken with certain flavors of dollars, right? And so certain types of activities like capital can't be used when it's a shelter or an outreach project.
So they can't plan for replacing their air conditioning units as they serve people or maintain their facility?
That can't be included in their operational budget for the purpose of our funding sources.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add, Councilmember Arias, to your comments, so a few years ago, the council decided to go back out and actually allow nonprofits to apply for these dollars because I think there were a number of years that we didn't allow nonprofits to come forward. I think that then it's up to the council to decide what nonprofits we feel are the best investments because at the end of the day, they are serving the public. It's just a matter, again, of the priorities and the needs that exist.
Hello, I'm Austin Robinson, a consultant with USANA Development and a CDBG project manager. We currently have many infrastructure improvement projects, both completed and underway by our Parks Department. Here you can see examples of brand-new play equipment installed at the Fink White Park. This includes soft fall servicing that prevents children from hurting themselves and below a wheelchair lift in the process of being installed at Ted C. Will's Community Center to make it more ADA compliant. Also at Ted C. Will's Community Center, a brand-new basketball court was installed. Some other park improvements that are currently underway but not shown: ADA improvements at Holmes Park, the installation of a new HVAC unit at Ted C. Will's Park, and gym door replacements and bathroom renovations at Romaine Park. In total, these park improvements benefit an estimated 15,000 people in their surrounding Public Works Department also completed a number of projects this year with CDBG funds, including sidewalks, drive approaches, and curb ramps in the Hidalgo, Windchill, and Jefferson neighborhood, and also pavement reconstruction projects in the El Dorado neighborhood and the Shields-Dakota-Crystal-West Streets neighborhood. These public work projects will benefit an estimated 26,000 people. In addition to awarding CDBG funds to internal city departments, we also provided funding to Stone Soup for the installation of solar panels. Stone Soup, in collaboration with a fellow nonprofit, Grid Alternatives, trained low-income individuals from the El Dorado neighborhood in solar panel installation. This not only helps Stone Soup by giving them access to renewable energy, but also gives their residents in this neighborhood a chance to expand their skill set by earning field experience.
Let me interrupt you there. That was a fantastic project. I was there participating and supporting and it made a huge difference at Stone Soup and it's a good example for the neighborhood to follow. So well done, very well done.
Thank you. This...yeah, the solar electric system will help Stone Soup's neighborhood preschool save the agency an estimated $8,400 annually to support with other material costs and programming for the children and their families. Additionally, Stone Soup has partnered with Reading &amp; Beyond to provide more job training with the use of community service funds, which Alec Viberal will be elaborating on next.
Director, really quick, this is a perfect example of a good project and return investment in putting solar panels on a nonprofit's rooftop. What keeps us from putting solar panels on our parks, community center rooftops and us also benefiting from energy safety? and us also benefiting from energy savings?
So I would actually defer to the Assistant City Manager, Jim Shad, or the Parks Director on that particular, you know, what, what is preventing us? I know that we are in the process of assessing each of our facilities and determining what are those cost-effective measures that we can do, but they, it is certainly an eligible activity. It's not that it can't be done, but there may be other issues in terms of the structural facility, capacity of the building to support the solar panels or other factors that need to happen first before we can get to that point.
We actually have a workshop scheduled for next council meeting on energy efficiency.
Great, thank you. Can you call it the Green New Deal?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. Oh.
Good morning, my name is Alec Vibral, a CDBG project manager with USANA Development. CDBG funds were used to fund a number of public and community service programs. Two of these programs are run by the Parks Department. The after-school program helped seven hundred and twelve youth at ten locations by helping to foster character development, promoting health and fitness, providing a secure, clean, and friendly environment, and providing support system for family unity. The senior hot meals program helped nine hundred and ninety-seven seniors at seven locations by offering nutritious meals, social activities, and educational presentations towards participants, as well as providing numerous resources to help maintain and improve their physical and mental well-being. Grants were also given to nonprofit organizations, such as the Lowell Community Development Corporation for their tenant education program. The tenant education program helped one hundred and forty-five tenants by providing them with crucial information about their tenant, about their rental rights and responsibilities, helping them to make sure that they are treated fairly by their landlords. As Austin previously mentioned, Stone Soup created a partnership with Reading &amp; Beyond to provide ninety clients with comprehensive case management services. These services minimize barriers for employment by hosting soft skills workshops to include, to improve their employability, giving funding support to attain industry-recognized credentials, and by providing short vocational training. With the help of a CDBG, CDBG grant, Hope Builds was able to expand their Section Three job training program and assisted forty individuals by providing training, mentoring, and technical assistance in order to help them find jobs. Boys and Girls Club administered their after-school program, which provided one thousand thirty-one youth with academic support and tutoring, job training, self-sufficiency skills, prevention programs, and socialization and recreation in three-city park centers. The Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission provided one hundred and eighty-eight youth with mentoring, homework assistance, educational field trips, and recreation through their Street Saints program. The Fair Housing Council of Central California provided a comprehensive program of education and enforcement of state and federal fair housing laws. The goal of this program is to improve fair access to housing. Some of the education activities include hosting a yearly fair housing training conference, airing a monthly broadcast on a local Fresno radio station that informs listeners of fair housing laws and different housing programs, and dispersing printed fair housing materials to various public locations. Some of the enforcement activities include tracking complaints by zip code within Fresno by gender and by race slash ethnicity, testing of real estate developments within Fresno on the basis of race and/or national origin, and referring victims of slum lords to attorneys for legal redress. And now back to Mr. Morgan.
I have some questions. So I have a couple of questions in regards to the senior hot meals. I know that I've gotten some complaints from some of my seniors about the quality of the food. Who do we, who is our vendor? And are we having, are we providing actual healthy food options? Because what I'm getting is that they're getting hot dogs for lunch or something like that. So they're complaining about the healthiness of the food. And similar with the after-school programs for the kids. You know, we are the breadbasket of this world. I think that we should figure out a way to make sure that we're providing healthy options for food.
Great, thank you. Again, we're reporting on the accomplishments of the different programming. So this staff doesn't actually do the programming, but we can certainly get you a report and we can get that feedback. That's great feedback from, from the various agencies and nonprofits that provide those specific services. So for the, for the purpose of today, what we really want to do is to report on the activities that were accomplished over the past year, to have a, a public hearing so we can get feedback, and then we'll be, we can take all of those comments and provide those back to the agencies.
This is my feedback. Because maybe, I know that in the Highway City area, or in the Inspiration Park, I know that the numbers of seniors have been...
We can have TJ get with you on who is providing. I believe it's EOC providing those meals. But the Parks Pro, Parks Department runs that program through the community centers, and TJ would be the best person to answer that question.
Yeah, I think what I would recommend, if it hasn't happened, is to survey the people that we're serving to see, you know, because I know that I've received several complaints from our seniors on that. So I'd like to see if we can do that. And then also, the other question that I had regarding the dollars, I know that we've given the Lowell CDC for now a number of years on the tenant education component. Are we doing that? Are, are, are there any efforts underway? There's a number of other CDCs. I know that there's a Highway CDC, I know that there's a Southwest CDC. I don't know if, uh, other neighborhoods, but I know that we're seeing more CDCs kind of be created and step up. And I know that at the beginning, when the Lowell CDC was first started, the, the city kind of stepped up to give seed money, and then we began to put some more resources there. Are there any efforts underway to make sure that we are kind of doing the same with these other CDCs that are popping up and stepping up to, you know, fill in the gaps to some of the work that needs to be done in the neighborhoods?
Absolutely. We would, we would love to have some of the additional CDCs that are growing in our community to come and present projects that they would like to undertake, whether it's similar activities or a different kind of activity that's a, and a social service, or a public service, or a facility improvement. Absolutely, we would love to have some of those additional agencies apply for the dollars and, and get those out into the community.
Okay, perfect. Because I know that there's a couple of new ones, so I think that we should definitely encourage them. I don't know what way we can do the outreach. If you guys should do the outreach, or we just put them in contact with you guys, I don't know how, what's the best way.
Absolutely. So they are on our mailing list, but certainly I would ask that if you encouraged them to apply, I'm sure that they would feel like they were being supported and they would feel more confident in making an application for funding.
Okay, perfect. We will do that, because I think a lot of folks think that the same folks get the monies every year and that they don't have a shot, so they don't want to waste their time in applying, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's, that it's always good to have additional support on that. So just in wrapping up, this is again, we just finished Latin, the end of June, the fourth of the five years of our consolidated plan. As you can see, in all of the areas, except for one, we have well exceeded our goals initially. The public facility and infrastructure category, in terms of the number of facilities that we would assist, we have a number of facilities underway. We anticipate hitting a hundred percent or beyond by the end of the fifth year, which would be June thirtieth of 2020. So just to wrap up, before we turn it over to the public hearing, I would like to thank all of our staff who have worked diligently to ensure timely performance and compliance with all of our federal regulations, and then, and to our nonprofits who are our feet on the ground, who make these programs happen. And at this time, we'd ask you to open a public hearing and take comment on the caper. Thank you.
If, if I may just provide you feedback on this last item. Our partnership with the Fair Housing Council, I, I'm still yet to see the value of that partnership. I know what the role is, but in the world of, we have, we're having, we have a rental inspection program. I don't see any coordination. I don't see, frankly, I think it feels like a checking off the box. We give somebody money, but I still don't see how that is a value to the CDBG overall goal. So just my feedback, I'm open to learning more, but I want that revisited in the next round.
Absolutely. And we will put that into consideration as we start building the next consolidated plan.
Okay, we will start with our public hearing. Thank you all for being here, great job. The, the young people here, it's amazing. You had a great presentation. I know we're a little nervous up here, and all, but you did fantastic. All of you did a great job, so thank you for that. Now we'll open it up to the public. Anyone in our community wish to come forward? You can have three minutes to address the issues on this item. Name and address, and you have three minutes.
Jonas Paulos, homeless veterans advocate, fifty-eight, ninety-one, South Cherry Avenue. Yeah, my heart aches. I'm pretty sure you guys heard twenty-two a day. That's how many, it's a shame. That's how many veterans we lose a day, one every hour. You know, we got all this wealth. We need to help our veterans. They have PTSD. The stuff that we are practicing right now is not working. There's a change of strategy we need to do. Maybe do the, uh, the point in time, counting, in the summertime. I'm pretty sure the police department would testify to that. How many homeless are out there? It's not fifteen hundred, it's probably three thousand or more. Because I'm, I've been doing this for four years, it became a passion of mine. I get up because of twenty-two a day, I'm, I can go out there, save one. That's what I go for, I save the whole bunch of them. So please consider that. They all need to work together. The West Cares, the EOCs, the Housing Authority need to give our head vashes quickly. We are in crisis. This is an emergency. I have PTSD. I thank God for my parents rescued me and I went to treatment from sports that I love. So I know what it's like. I have dark days, but you know what? I became a fighter on the ground, and you'll see me everywhere. I want our veterans to get help housed. So I just want them to look at it, you know, instead of doing the point in time, counting, in the wintertime, because there's an ordinance, you're not going to find them in one spot. They're scattered throughout the city. They're in their bridges, they're in the alleys, they're in your driveways. So please rescue them, thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of veterans. That means a lot to all of us. Anyone else wish to come forward? This is the opportunity to address this issue. Okay, we'll close that part. We have a motion to approve by Member Brettafield, I'll second it. The screen is clear, any further comments? All those, anyone opposed to this motion? Passes seven zero, thank you, thank you, your team.
Thank you all for your time and good work.
Eleven o'clock, eh? Eleven o'clock.
Okay. We will address the eleven AM item. It's a bill for introduction with adding to the Fresno Municipal Code regarding short-term rentals. This is sponsored by Member Brettafield and President Capriolio. Gary, you want to kick it off?
I'll kick it off. This, this issue was addressed because in, in our districts, we've had some problem with, problems, some with Airbnb rentals. Some people have rented these homes, created a problem. There's been some drunken episodes and noise issues throughout the neighborhood, and it's been an ongoing issue and a struggle for law enforcement to deal with. So we've been meeting Councilman Capriolio and, and myself and all the staff and our police to come up with some kind of way to deal with this problem. The Airbnbs have not been regulated in our city. They are regulated throughout most communities. And so we looked at different ordinances with our city staff, city manager staff, came up with this ordinance, which I think is a reasonable approach. It's not heavy-handed in any way. It essentially requires Airbnb businesses to acquire a permit and a business tax. It's as simple as that, and to follow the rules and regulations that are appropriate for that kind of business. The police support the ordinance. City Attorney appreciate all of the staff in terms of working to make this, this happen. And again, I think this is an appropriate approach to deal with this problem. We support our businesses, we support the Airbnb community, but we want to make sure that when people are renting homes, they're a good neighbor to all the other houses and neighbors around them. And I think this, this approach will address that problem. And I'd like to make the motion to approve, and then Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, I'll second that, but I have an amendment when we get to that point. But I wanted to thank Roz for being here and for all the hard work you do, not only as a neighborhood watch guru, if you will. You, you make the whole thing work, and we appreciate you. And all the residents have called our offices with this issue. And I wanted to thank Captain Castro, Lieutenant Hughes, Sergeant Atkinson, and our Northeast Policing District for all the work in dealing with this issue. So this is really, really not about a tax, it's really about accountability. And it's about calling the ghost owners at two AM and informing them about the so-called party they're not aware of that's taking place on the property. Most of these properties are registered, but it doesn't have current contact information. So this will allow the city to capture current information and track where the A, Airbnbs are, so we can enforce this ordinance. Unfortunately, the trend is now to rent these Airbnb and Bs for illegal activity. Some of these you can rent for up to a month. And so what happens is they conduct honey oil-taking extractions from marijuana, and that's a very dangerous process. There's many other activities from not just partying, prostitution. There's tons of things that go on that we felt necessary to address and make a change. So we are asking for the support of this council on this item. And I would just add, Eric, Gary, if we can, that each, this would be an amendment. Each policing district and council districts shall be notified of applications that are approved through the Finance Department as the issuing department. So that way, you and I and everyone on the dais can have notice of this, and we can work together with our police department to make it happen.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll support that.
Very good. So with that, we will take it out to the public and then come back to the council. So anyone in the public, Roz, I have a card, I have a card from you if you'd like to come up and, and help clarify what we're trying to do here this morning, and appreciate all your hard work, not only with this, but just everything you do.
Thank you.
That's why you're Woman of the Year for District Four.
You live in a community like this, you have to support it, and you have to help. First off, you know I'm against them, period. I'd like to know if any of you have an Airbnb in your neighborhood. If you don't, lucky you. We had one show up in our neighborhood less than two months ago. I gave, I sent a letter to all of you, I brought it in. Hannah told you all the things that ha, that occurred. And I, I've done a lot of research since then. And with all due respect to my police officers, I don't think they can exist in Fresno. And I can tell you why. Because I've talked to some of the owners. And I said, where's your permits? Where's your li, where's? Oh, we don't need that. This is our house, we can do what we want. I said, what about the neighbors? Eh, huh, the neighbors. We've had some really serious problems, as I addressed in that letter. And it's gone on, although we are working with the owner of the property. He has put cameras up, he only allows eight people. And when he sees that escalating, he now comes over. However, the other thing I would like to see, if this passes, which I'm sure it will, no grandfather clause, because that is a cop-out. Anyone that has an A Airbnb, and that's what they are. They're motels in residential neighborhoods. Matter of fact, Arizona calls them rental, short-term rental party houses, because that's what they end up being, especially if there isn't anyone living in the house, where they rent a room. They rent the entire house. This one in our neighborhood happens to be, have a swimming pool, and it, it's beautiful. They've done a super job on the inside of the house and the outside of the house. We have no objections to that, although they've lied to us in the future, in the first part, and told us a family was moving in. A week later, we had a party that we had to stop. We had to call the police. Took three, three police cars to come out because someone turned it into social media. So people that had nothing to do with the party showed up. We had, we had Highway ninety-nine on Rialto Street. And, but anyhow, I... And, but anyhow, I, as I said, no matter what you call them, they're still a motel in a residential neighborhood. I ran a report on a survey. A thousand people were surveyed across the states where there are these type of facilities. Their issues were additional traffic, PD calls, unsupervised parties, trash, beer bottles and cans, which the day after this party that we stopped, all the cars went to the other block waiting for the police to leave. Well, the police didn't leave. And the next day, those neighbors said our yards were full of beer cans and beer bottles, where they had drank their stuff and threw it. So, those are the issues. The other issue is, the survey indicates that they have, the top three concerns are the same things that we have. Disrupt the peace, cause safety issues, allow unvetted strangers into neighborhoods, which is diametrically opposed to Neighborhood Watch. Neighborhood Watch says you should know who is your neighborhood, who should be there. That we're against.
Wrap it up for us.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Forty percent of the responses have values would decrease, while 50% felt less safe. So, if you're going to pass this, there are a couple of issues I think need to be included, so that we can continue to fight it. What happens, or what consideration will be given to the majority of the property owners in the 500-foot square radius who are against these? What's their recourse?
Roz, just a second. I'll just give you a little bit more time, because she's the neighborhood voice. So, Roz, wrap it up in like a minute if you can, because we've got to go farther into this issue.
I'm sorry?
Could you wrap up your comments?
As soon, as soon as I get these questions answered.
Well, Roz, we have to move on. You've gone over three minutes. I'm sorry. But we have to keep moving. That's what the call for the question.
Well, you should have done it at the last time, when all of those people stood up and spoke.
Roz, we can call you back to answer questions. Roz, just hang on. You can help us with these questions. So, anyone else in the public wish to talk about this? Come forward? All right. And then we'll bring it back up here. And Member Esparza, you're first, and followed by Member Chavez. I'm sorry. Please come forward. Absolutely. That's okay. Give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Roz Clark's daughter. I've had to move over to her house because of the Airbnb and the troubles. I have been threatened with bang, bang, you're dead. And guess what? The car is around the corner from me in Clovis. But it just disrupts everything. They have parties on weekends. We can't park in our driveways, in our streets. Something's got to be mandated where, how many times can they have a party in a month in that house? Just getting licenses and taxes is one thing. But you do a tax. At hotels, you pay a hotel tax every night. Are they only paying one tax? But hello, you know, it just keeps on going. But we're having parties. We're shutting them down. They go to the next block. We have one house that's across from us. We have the owner calling us, asking us to call the police, because he thinks there's going to be a party in another Airbnb. Guess what? It ended up being his own Airbnb. So, something's got to be done more than just doing taxes. There's got to be something that the police have something they can bite into, shut them down. Not shut them down, that's illegal, but stop the parties. But we can't park during the weekends. Forget it. We can't park in our neighborhood. And all the neighbors are screaming. And I'm sure it's happening in the other neighborhoods, too. Because you rented tonight. You rented it next night. You rented it the next night, and you're having parties. And that is what a lot of the problem is. Yes, they rent it for a whole month. They do whatever they do for the whole month. But then, if they have a party every night, because they have so many friends, we have nothing. We're getting threatened. The neighborhoods are getting threatened. We're getting stuff destroyed. Neighbors are getting their yards destroyed, peed on, everything. So, what stops them from saying that, okay, you rented it tonight. You rented it next night, and they're having parties?
Well, that's kind of what this is all about. So, we're addressing those issues, and thank you for bringing them forward. But we've got that problem identification nailed down pretty good. So, now we're trying to work on solutions. And we'll have some input from everybody else on that item, too.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else want to come forward and discuss this precise issue?
You guys know that three minutes is not enough.
Okay.
And Terry's machine are the slowest. And I agree.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right.
I've conquered Terry's machine already. And Terry's scared. Does our Terry's hiding?
All right. Anyone else wish to come forward? This is the time and place. All right. So, now we'll bring it back to the diocese Member Esparza.
Can I chime in for a second? I apologize. So, we have a little issue with, we're really not sure about the process of this. Okay, sorry. There we go. There we go. So, I was just meeting with staff, and my concern is this a permit or a business license? And we have some concerns about the process. So, I would love to suggest that we table this until the first meeting in October, so that we can work through the process, so that we can implement whatever it is that council desires. But we do want to just make sure it's clear for staff. And we would like to tie it to the business license as opposed to a planning permit.
Or could you both, planning permit and business license?
Well, and Jennifer and I were just talking, there's a huge distinction between the two, and we think it would be easier to tie it to business license.
Well, I have a question. I'm not sure why this is being raised now. We've talked about this throughout the process. I think we've all been in agreement with this. And so, I don't understand why this is coming up now. And I'd like the city attorney to maybe address this issue as well.
I don't understand what the issue is that's being raised.
I don't either.
Jennifer, do you mind coming up, please?
And just to be clear, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, the item. So, we haven't all had conversations.
In the first couple of meetings that we've attended, we had talked about business license, tying it to business license, and the benchmark cities that we researched, that was all tied to business license, if I recall. So, Jennifer, do you mind? I know I'm putting you on the spot. I apologize. But if you could please differentiate between the planning process versus business license, and we can pull upon mic, too, if we need to.
Sure. So, when we have met on this program, we had talked about the primary goals were, one, to ensure that the city, particularly fire and police, knew who the owners were in the opportunity to contact them. So, that was a form of a registration through the business license process. Two was to ensure that the transit occupancy tax, the TOT, was being paid on the property. So, it was built originally, when we were in the meetings, was a licensing. To make this a special permit in planning, it would actually require an amendment to our zoning ordinance to add this as a use. It's not defined anywhere in the zoning ordinance. And so, we had talked about, you know, looking at, there are less than 500 of these in the city of Fresno. And we felt that a really good first step, and we agree that a good first step is ensuring that there is a mechanism for police and fire to know who the owner is to contact them in the case of an emergency. And we also agree that all of the properties that are acting as a rental, like a hotel kind of property, a bed and breakfast, should be paying transit-oriented tax, the TOT. And at this point, we think if there's additional processes that we want to add, it would be beneficial to have a little more time to go through what are those processes? The new, the ordinance or the resolution as written is a little different. It requires notification. There isn't a process for that currently built. What is the result of the notification? Is there an appeal process? How does that work? So, none of that has been kind of discussed in this particular version of this bill. And we are very supportive of registration. We're very supportive of the collection of the taxes. We just need a little more understanding of what the next steps would look like. And we think a little more time would give us that opportunity.
The next steps regarding getting a permit?
So, if this is going to require a special permit, like a special use permit or any kind of land use permit, it would require an amendment to the development ordinance.
Okay.
This is not a land use permit. This is simply a permit. You could call it a license, whatever. This is not land use. This is just an operational, business-type of permit.
So, which is what we had originally discussed. So, a license, not a permit, that would be applied for at finance, and they would get the information that was necessary. The noticing of the neighboring properties wasn't originally discussed. So, that was a new piece. And so, having a zone clearance, is this a residential property? Can you use it for residential uses? Yes or no? Then they go back and get their license. I mean, I think that can be clarified either today or in the future. But that needs to be clarified, that it's not a permit that is not noticing, doesn't have any kind of ramifications that relates to appeals, et cetera.
I think it's defensible as written. I don't think we typically say what this, in the ordinance, what it is not. It's a permit. It meets certain qualifications. You get the permit. And if you violate the terms of the permit, it can be revoked. That's essentially the ordinance.
Absolutely. And that's what was discussed in our meetings. So, I don't quite understand this 11th-hour issue at all. If you had the issue, I don't know why it wasn't brought up before. We've been working on this with numerous meetings. Perhaps we can set this as introduction, and if there's some amendments. It is for introduction. So, if there's any subsequent amendments between now and the actual vote, then we can address that, if it's appropriate, by those that are concerned. If we wish to incorporate them, we can. If not, so be it. And then we'll go back to the screen. But I just want to, as my colleague knows, this is the first time he's heard about it, maybe verbally, but it's in our book. And so, if you read the book, you'll get it, number one. Number two, Brown Act is we can't talk about it. As much as we want to talk about it and share what we know with everyone from law enforcement and their involvement, we can't do that because of the Brown Act. So, now we'll go to Member Esparza, finally.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I want to thank both yourself and Councilmember Brettafield for, you know, bringing this issue forward. I think a city of our size and caliber definitely should have regulations on short-term rentals. Personally, I'd like to see a bit more of a sophisticated process in the regulations. I think what I've heard so far in the room is kind of a mischaracterization of the entire industry. And I think our goal is to obey the nuisances that are happening in the neighborhood, because they are happening in your districts. But as I read the ordinance to change the municipal code, it looks more like something that's going to severely decrease the number of Airbnbs by imposing high barriers and burdens on these small property owners or renters who are hosting folks at their homes. So, I would also advocate, I do want to continue the discussion here this morning. And I have a few amendments I'd like to throw out there, and I want to hear the other ideas that my colleagues have. But ultimately, I think us rushing this ordinance today is a bad idea. I think the legislation is not fully baked. But I think a discussion here today is the beginning of that process. So, to begin with, I mean, to, you know, I don't know about the distinction between the license and the permit. You know, if we're going to have a permitting process, I think it should just be one. So, in this ordinance, I see both. I see business tax, business license requirement in addition to a permit. I think it should just be one extremely simple streamlined process, electronic if possible. I'd like to see a fee study to make sure we're not overcharging folks. But not to exceed $60. I know other cities do it for as low as $25 in terms of the application fee. So, something very simple, low barrier. And upon submission, I'd like to see the provisional status as the application's being considered. I mean, we all know, we hear it every day as council members, what folks go through trying to get permits here to the city. You know, bureaucracy is a fact of life. It's necessary to make sure we're vetting things. But if we have an influx of applications, I'd like to see them at provisional as they're considered for approval. The TOT that we're collecting, I think it makes sense to earmark that money towards code enforcement, to make sure we actually have funding to enforce the ordinance that we're going to eventually pass. And another piece here, I saw that the applicant should provide consent to notice by mail. I think we should also, you know, make them provide consent to notice by digital email or some form, so that it's not such a delayed process, and they're getting immediate notification. And of course, what I'm looking for here is some logistics on violating the problem houses, the problem properties, but ultimately not harming the whole industry that we have here in Fresno. So, just a few ideas. I'm happy to share them with the sponsors. But like I said, I would advocate for a tabling of this until we fully, fully vet it. But I think here, we're all here in the open. All seven of us can talk about it now, get our ideas out, as opposed to back there with only three people.
Very good. Thank you for your input. Member Chavez?
We'll address that.
Thank you. I think, you know, we've gone through this conversation before. I think it's the ongoing challenge of cities and municipalities with the gig economy, where we had this conversation with regards to Uber and the airport fees. Now, we're going through the Airbnb. But I think, you know, within the context of that conversation, yes, we want to be business-friendly. But I will tell you that in my district, I've had a couple of incidents where there are folks that rent these homes, especially ones that have a pool in there and have pool parties, where they subsequently charge folks to come in and spend money and drink. So, we have to be mindful and respectful of the residents. I do have a couple of questions that I want to put. We don't necessarily have to answer them now, because I'm supportive of introducing this, but also understanding that there will be amendments coming forward. One would be, do we have an idea of how many of these units there are currently in operation in the city of Fresno? We do? We do not? How many is there?
I believe, and city attorney, you can correct me, but there's approximately 240 of these units?
I'd heard something in that neighborhood, 240 to 270.
Okay.
40 to 70? And then how are we going to pay for the enforcement of this? Would it just be through the traditional business fee schedule? And is it just a standard fee that we're charging for what normally a business would be charged?
The fee, and again, the city attorney, you can correct me. The fee that we were planning on doing was just the cost of city staff processing a permit.
Right. To come up with a permit fee, we'd amend master fee schedule. There'd need to be a fee study to determine what the actual time would take to actually process that permit.
Can't get any more innocuous than that. Nobody's trying to, you know, charge these folks money. But we are trying to monitor them, know what's going on, and have a mechanism in place to make law enforcement's job a whole lot easier. It's not as complicated as we're hearing. We've worked on this. It is time to move this forward. But I'm sorry, Louis, finish.
Sure. No. And then last, last part. I mean, I personally used them. I just used an Airbnb this past weekend in Salt Lake. So, I know the convenience piece. But every time I'm actually searching for an Airbnb, I actually look at the description. And I think this goes down to the personal responsibility of the property owner, where they specifically prohibit parties, and they limit the amount of folks that can actually be in the property. I think we also need to look at that and determine what that would be acceptable for the process that we go in through. So... So needs a little bit of work, but I'm mindful and respectful of the work that Councilmember Brettafield and Capriolo have done. And, you know, I'll be supportive of introducing it and then coming with amendments that I think will fit better by district and by part of the, of the city.
Thank you. Member Carbasi, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Roz, I want to thank you for your passion for talking about this issue. I've had an instance in an area in my district where people have had concerns, but they weren't concerned about Airbnb. They were concerned about party houses. And that's the issue, stopping the party houses, empowering code enforcement, empowering our law enforcement to be able to do something about it, but also empowering the council members for being able to respond when residents call. Now, I have some reservations about what I see right here, but I want to thank Councilmembers Capriolio and Brettafield for getting the process rolling and taking leadership on this, because this is a problem that's been festering and it's going to get worse if we don't do anything. But I do want to say, I don't want to add a layer of bureaucracy. I also don't want to do anything that seems a little bit anti-business. And for example, Roz, there are Airbnbs in my neighborhood. You know why I don't know about it? Because those owners are responsible and don't do anything wrong. So a part of this requires any Airbnb to inform residents within 500 feet. The problem is now people are going to know they're around and they're just going to complain because they complain, and it's going to create a problem where there isn't one. Another problem I have is requiring them to get business licenses. Permits are okay. Having to go through the business license process, these are not big professional businesses. And I don't, I've had to go through business, the business license process myself. I don't want to put that for someone that rents a room. Now someone that rents a whole house, I get there's a difference there. I didn't have a question, Roz. I was just commenting.
Well, on business license, I rent out a facility for a, a beauty salon.
Uh huh.
I have to have a business license.
Absolutely.
Now, I don't run it. I just rent it.
Right.
I pay to the city and I'm also charged by the state for this business license.
Right.
So if that's going to be a business, then they should. And I think you're wrong with the number. I receive phone calls. I received one Tuesday morning in Northwest Fresno about a party.
Uh huh.
Eight to nine automobiles and they had, the, the people that live there couldn't park.
Okay.
So there are a lot of issues to this that are just not saying, we're going to pass this.
Point of order, Mr. President.
And we're going to do it.
Roz?
Mr. President.
Roz, we're working. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I continue my comments? It's okay.
Member Carbasi, do you have some more remarks?
No, I'm going to continue my comments, sir.
Mr. Love?
Okay. So I'm just going to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
So again, this is about the party houses. The vast majority of Airbnb and willing to bet, or any other platform, they don't violate the rules. I don't want to punish those folks for doing what they've been doing and doing it right. So I love that we're talking about this and it's easier in the open where we can talk about it. And again, Gary, thank you so much for taking leadership on this. Let's work together and make this stronger so we can pass it. And hey, let's try and pass it unanimously if we can. But I think there are some good concerns here.
Thank you. Next, Member Brettafield, followed by, no.
So, Mr. Carbasi, so you don't want these folks to fill out, to have a business license?
I want them to be permitted, but when you rent one room out on occasion, I don't think you should have to get a business license for that. I think that's overregulation.
Yeah, but these, these are businesses, and I think that would be not fair to other businesses who could make an argument, well, I don't want to have a business license either. And again, this is part, I mean, I'm all for encouraging and supporting businesses. I think that's very clear. But if we're trying to regulate, if we're trying to have some control, people doing business in our city and being required to have a business license, it's standard.
That's a great point. I think that we can have control without a business license, because these are, these are residences, these are private property, and I want to respect their rights. I do think there is, you know, with the license process, we'll have the ability to have, give more power to the police department to be able to enforce this or code enforcement. But there's another one, and I think it's kind of discriminatory, that says, if you lose your license for that property and that site and you have any other property, all those properties are removed. And there are certain circumstances, you know, is there a warning system? What if it happens one time, two times, three times? I, I think that you're on the right track and I want to fully support you, but we just need a little bit more work to answer some of these questions that are brought up.
Member Carbasi, I think you're correct. And that's why it's for introduction. This isn't our final product. So again, the Brown Act and all those things, they really limit our ability to communicate with each other as much as we want. So it is for introduction. As co-sponsor, we believe that it's open for suggestions and improvements. We always want to make things better, but we have to have liftoff. We have to get this process started. That's what, remember Brettafield and I, our target was really to get going. Yes.
Follow-up question. So, and with that, thank you. So if we, if we approve this, are you both willing to work and make amendments? Or this is just the way you want it and that's it?
Amendments, always, always amendments.
Absolutely can make changes, whatever makes sense. I mean, we're all for that. And one final thing, I, I just want to say, Mike, this was looked at through other communities. I mean, this isn't something we just made up. We looked at other cities and communities and actually lowered the standards that others have in order to be user-friendly, in order to be business-friendly. I appreciate your comment about the 500-foot radius. I don't want to create unnecessary alarm. So I'm open to all of those suggestions. I think that actually that's a very good suggestion. And I, you know, we're open to changing that. There's no problem with doing that.
Okay, I got it. I'll tell you what, I move to amend the, the ordinance to strike that out, the 500-foot radius.
Okay. I, I would be willing to support that, but I, I would like to, before we do that, I would just like law enforcement to come up, because we've worked with them closely. Whoever you'd like to have as a representative to address the, the issue. But if you're open to it, Council President, I'm, I'm certainly open to it.
Yeah, I, I am. I, as I say, I would perfect this process and, and produce the best product we as a council can do. We always try to work that way and we're always malleable, if you will. We're always flexible. We're always willing to improve a concept or an idea. And then after we do this, the city manager has been patient. She's up after this dialogue. You're, you have the floor, Chief.
Well, we, we're supportive of, of the ordinance, obviously. We don't, we don't really know how many Airbnbs are one-day or multi-day rentals there are in our city, because we don't have a permit process available. And you're absolutely right, Councilmember, is that the ones that, that are the problem are the ones that are having parties, pool parties, working on their cars in the front yard. Whatever they're doing is disturbing the neighborhood and ruining the quality of life in a neighborhood. Those become the issues for us, but we don't have any ability to do anything with it. You know, we, we could go on to rentals and a whole bunch of other areas that, that create problems for us, but on this area, we, we do need, we do need the ability to know who they are, so we can contact a responsible owner and say, you're having problems, so so they can address it.
What precludes you now, an existing ordinance, to shut down a party house? Why can't you just shut down a party house? You guys shut them down every day in any other part of town. Why can't you do that to an Airbnb?
Why can't we shut it down?
Correct.
Well, we can, if they, if they're, if they, if they're cooperative. If they don't answer the door, we can't kick the door in. So we have, we are somewhat limited on, in our ability to do things. Now, if, if they're cooperative, you're absolutely right, Councilmember.
Are you telling me that people in North Fresno that are having a party, when the police show up, you knock on the door, they don't, they don't open it?
Absolutely, all over the city.
So you currently have existing authority to shut down a party house?
I do not have the authority to kick in a door and shut down a party.
But in Airbnb, if they open a door, you can shut it down if it's a party house?
No, it, it's no different. The rules don't change. What a lot, what changes is it allows me to, to come back in the backside of it and go after their permits and take away their permit, their ability to do it again. If, if they're not cooperative, if whoever's renting is not cooperative, we're limited what we can do. We just can't, we just can't go kick a door and arrest everybody inside it. Just the rules don't allow us to do that.
We'll really try to get at the ownership, not necessarily the party people. We'll get them as well, but the essence of this is to address ownership, responsibility, and accountability.
I, I understand that, Council President, but right now, if there's a party house, irrespective of whether it's Airbnb, the police show up and you guys can shut it down, irrespective of whether they're a renter or a homeowner, right? It's a nuisance. There's current rules in place that you can shut down a party house. If it's loud, if it's unsafe, if there's underage drinkers, if they're a safety hazard, you have the authority to shut down any party house in the city of Fresno.
We can, we can respond to the residents and we can knock on the door and we can ask for voluntary compliance, but we do not have the authority to go into a residence where there's a party occurring and make arrests. We just don't.
Is, uh, Member Brettafield, this is your witness, if you will.
No, I think he's expressed, he's been involved in the ordinance, has his city staff. And so they're in support. I'm open to the change that you want to make, Councilmember Carbasi. This is where this discussion needs to take place, not somewhere back there, out here. And we're open to that change as well.
Councilmember Brettafield, you know, we're limited because of the Brown Act. I'm sure if we sat down, we work well together. I'm, I'm confident in that. Thank you, Chief. I think we need a policy. There's no question about that. We need to give, I mean, I've been on a few ride-alongs and we do go up to these party houses and I've seen myself the limits the department has. So what I'm going to do is, my motion didn't get a second, so I'm going to make another motion, because I'm assuming it died. So I move to amend the bill.
Which motion failed person?
500 feet.
No, I said I would support that. So if you needed a second.
A second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then, I hate to do this, I'm going to amend my, my amendment. Okay, I'm going to continue to amend my, my motion. So, item D1 on page, where are we? No, page, was it three or two?
What, what page are you on, sir?
Two.
Oh, D2. I'm sorry, D1 on page two. I want to strike out point number one, requiring a business license. The other one is going to be on, no, item number, on page five, point three, where it says, "A renewal may be denied if a short-term rental permit issued to the applicant or the property has been suspended or revoked for the prior 12 months at that location." I want to strike out the, or any other location owned by the same applicant. Also.
Wait, Mike, where's that?
Go ahead.
Page what?
Page five.
And what, where's that?
Looks like the second.
Item three.
Third paragraph.
You see where it says, the paragraph before H, a renewal? Just the last part, or any other location owned by the same applicant.
So you're just saying the party house gets shut down, not everything else?
Absolutely. And they can lose their license on that house.
I understand.
The other one is going to be eight E, which is going to be... Where's that?
Oh, page, page four.
I want to remove, that's the one we talked about.
Right.
Removing 500-foot radius. And then item number eight, right above it, where it says US mail and/or electronic delivery. Those are the recommendations I have.
Okay. Are you, okay, you've concluded your comments. City Manager, you've been very patient.
Okay, thank you. So after conferring with Jennifer and Mike Lima, our, our preference...
If you can move that microphone.
Okay, sorry, sorry. My, our preference, usually my voice carries louder, as you guys know, so I apologize. So we would like to change the reference from the word permit to license and tie it to the business license tax. And we, I appreciate your suggested amendment, but it is a business. It's a money-making endeavor, and I do think it would be unfair to other businesses if we don't require the business license tax. And I think it would be easier to process for us if it's a license. We do everything in finance and, and it's easier and we, we get you what you need, Mr., or Councilmember Brettafield.
You know, Counsel, I'd just like to point out for the record that right now, if you own three rental properties, you don't need a business license. So you only need a business license when you own a fourth rental property. We are literally treating, you know, slum lords at a, at a higher standard or lower standard than we are this, this initiative. Like, we got to work through this out. There's so many gaps in this draft policy that we got to work through some of these issues.
With that in mind, the rental issues you have would be great. I'll help you with that. If you're going to bring it forward on a separate item, that's great.
Okay, can I respond to the City Manager?
Well, again, this is for introduction. I would suggest that you become the third member sponsoring this item the next go-around and that we can sit and confer and bring all these things in without Brown Act violations or other public policy.
Okay. First off, I'd be proud to do that. And I, I want to thank you, City Manager. You know, and I agree with you. The thing is, I worry about the worst-case scenario. I worry about the couple that wants a little extra income and rents a room out, not the whole party house. That's the only reason why I don't want them to get a business license, but definitely some kind of permit with a fee. That's the only reason why I mentioned that. I have a business license for my business. I would not feel like it's in a disadvantage to me. That's just the way I take it. Maybe if it's a whole house, that's a different story, but I'm sure we can work together and hash that out.
Well, I will second your amendment, Councilman Carbasi.
Thank you.
And we'll go along from there.
I agree with the amendment as well. So again, this does not preclude any refinement. We can make, we want to make it better. This is lively. This is a great discussion. We, we cut out a feeling that everyone would want to get involved, which is good. So that makes us a, a better product at the end. And Member, she already spoke, so then Member Soria, you're up.
Actually, Councilmember Capriolo, I have a lot of questions on this item. We have been going around to see whether we have questions on the item, which has been a back-and-forth conversation.
So maybe we should go after lunch. It's 12:08.
Do you want to vote on the amendment or no?
Sorry?
Do we have to vote on the amendment?
Did you have another amendment?
No, 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 I'm done.
Okay.
You seconded it. Do we have to vote on that amendment to the bill?
We, we will vote on it when it, when we, it's voting time.
My understanding, the maker of the motion agreed to the amendment, so you don't need to vote on it.
Okay.
So are we going to do a continuous after lunch?
Well, is there an echo in the building? We will take this up after lunch. We have the 1:30 consent calendar to address the 2 o'clock. And in those time zones, we will finish this off. My chief of staff is waving at me.
Counsel, my understanding is we were going to go directly into closed session for a short item at 1:30 on the Shell Oil versus, City of Fresno versus Shell Oil case. We have outside counsel here for that. So if we could go directly into closed after lunch and then return here?
Permission granted.
Thank you.
So we'll stand at recess until after we conclude our business. So thank you all for being here and your patience. All right, folks, we have a quorum. Thanks for your patience. We had some huge issues to resolve in our closed session. So with that, we will return to the last item, which was before recess, Airbnb. I think we've pretty well discussed that, but if my colleagues wish to go forward, we can do that rather than address this after introduction. So let me get my screen on. And Ismarola, you've punched up? Or is that last item or this one? And Ismarola, you've punched up. Or is that last item, or this one? And then after, uh, Member Soria, be it Member Asparza. And then a vote. Hopefully.
So, thank you, Council President. So I had similar concerns to some of the comments already made. Excuse me. The comments already made by a number of my colleagues. And I know that some amendments have been taken to address, um, those issues. But I do still feel, and I don't know when you guys say it's, uh, for introduction today, if it means that we're taking a voter's, just we're putting it for introduction, then the real vote will come next.
We have to vote indeed for introduction.
Do we, do we have to vote for introduction? I don't think there's a vote required.
A, a vote is not required in introduction. The final vote at adoption is the only one that really counts.
Yeah. I think that, um, a lot of good points have been brought up. I'd like to have, um, our local chambers weigh in. I think that it's always a good measure to, um, figure out, uh, if the policy is still business-friendly enough, um, to get the input from our chambers. So I'm hoping that, um, if they're watching, or, um, if we can get their attention and make sure that they come to the next meeting to weigh in. I have still concerns about, um, the permit and/or the license. I'm not sure where we're at in terms of what it's gonna be, but if one person just wants to rent out a room in, in their home through Airbnb, I think that there should be some, somewhat of a carve-out, um, and that maybe we should also, um, kind of follow the guidelines of the rentals, if you have, I think the minimum is three, or four, in order to have to get a license or permit through the City of Fresno. So I think some of it should mirror that. So those are some of the concerns that I have. Um, today, I'm obviously, um, okay with having a discussion. I think that other cities have demonstrated, um, some success in passing a policy that regulates the industry. But I also want to make sure that what we, um, what the outcome is, is actually clear. And I feel like it is all over the place right now with all the amendments that have been offered. So I'd like to see it amended, in the amended version, redlined, so that we can all have an opportunity to read it, assess it, get the legal implications from our city attorney with all those, um, redlines before we actually have a formal vote. So I would just rec- um, request that we don't take a vote today. We have had, I think, a robust discussion. The vote can simply take place next week.
Thank you. Member Asparza?
Yes. Uh, I'd like to first clarify with Councilmember Karbasi on the amendments that you, that you made, and I would like to offer a few more. Uh, so what I had down here from the previous, this morning, uh, and these three amendments were made and accepted, correct me if I'm wrong. Removing the business license requirement and thereby the business tax. Removing the provision, uh, providing 500-foot radius notice to neighbors. And, uh, if a permit is, uh, if a property owner is violated and their permit is removed, it only applies to that property, not to any other properties.
Correct, and electronic delivery of notices.
Electronic delivery, okay, digital, so, uh, in addition to the, the mail, also a digital delivery notices. Uh, I wanted to offer a friendly, I'll go down my list here. Uh, first friendly amendment. Uh, if, uh, as long as a complete application is, uh, submitted, they have provisional, uh, status to operate until the city, uh, either, you know, either confirms or denies that application. The sponsors accept that?
So you're saying that if they're operating now, before they would get a permit, they would be allowed to continue to operate?
As, as long as they, as long as they, uh, so my, my issue here is how long we, as a city, will take to actually filter through the applications.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we shut, we shut down Airbnbs because we're in the process of incorporating these, so I would agree with that.
Yes.
I think that's not quite what he's, I think he's saying, once you submit an application, you can operate provisionally pending the outcome of the ruling on your application.
Uh, uh, unless, unless you're coming off a violation, of course.
Right, right.
Unless what?
But, but ju- just on the initial, right? So if you have Airbnb now, or if you start an Airbnb in six months after we've passed this, uh, you put an application in, you provisionally can operate. Um, and then the city, at some point, uh, with whatever time period we, it ends up being for us, will either, uh, accept or deny the application.
I think that's fair.
Yes, okay. The other amendment that I mentioned earlier, my first comments, uh, I'd like for all the TOT collected to actually go, to go to code enforcement, so that we can, uh, effectively enforce and apply this ordinance. Does co-sponsors accept that amendment?
That's fine.
For the, uh, violation in terms of code enforcement, or whoever violates them, I'd like the, uh, the first violation to be a warning, uh, to give the property owners, uh, notice that they need to possibly refine the description, uh, of their, uh, property, um, and better filter out the folks that they allow to stay, um, at that property through Airbnb.
Wanted, oh, God.
Yeah, can you clarify that? I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the amendment would be that for the first violation will be a writ, it'll still be a violation, but it'll be a written warning. We're not gonna shut them down there on that first one.
I think that's great. A quick question. Um, if the police come in, they, they find some kind of, uh, felonious activity, do you think there's an automatic, like, a point where they automatically get revoked, or?
City Attorney, uh, is head in code enforcement. Uh, can you weigh in on the, sort of the latitude of our code enforcement officers in the hearing process?
We could say for a nuisance violation, it's a warning. If you commit a crime, then that's not a warning. You can go straight to revocation.
Does that work? That works for me?
Yeah.
Works for me.
That's fine.
And then the, uh, the next one here would be if, uh, if violation results in the revocation, again, that discretion among the code enforcement officers, it can be revoked for six, between at least six months, up to 12 months, depending on the, uh, the nature of what the violation is. I'm not sure if that's included already in what we just described, or if that's its own separate amendment.
I think that's new.
That's, that's, okay. Yeah, but the, the six to 12 months. What I, what I'm talking about here is not banning one house forever, but giving them a year, a six month, half a year to a, a year cool-off period.
And I think it would make sense, again, wouldn't it not, if it's a nuisance violation, if they're committing, obviously, serious crimes, that would be a whole nother thing.
Yeah, well, so my concern is kind of the same, you know, kind of argument I've heard you made before, right? I mean, you, you're the host, you're, you're letting someone in this, uh, property, uh, you don't really know what you're getting. And in some cases, they may have those, uh, alternative motives, uh, to use it as more than just a, a spot to sleep. Uh, so in that case, again, if the property owner can do what they want to do in terms of refining their description, possibly not letting that person stay there again, uh, giving them a bad review. I'm, I'm not sure if you've ever used it before, uh, but I think there, there's a number of steps that can be taken. Where it's, where we're not just, you know, slamming the hammer on them once and for all.
Right, agreed.
And then, I'd like to give direction to staff to make the application as, as simple as possible. And then, uh, I'm not sure, how would you go about doing a fee study, so that we have the lowest application fee possible?
Well, I think when we talked about the fee, and, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, the plan is to just charge the fee for whatever it is, staff time to process, which I think is reasonable.
The staff time, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not sure what that is. Do you have any idea?
You do a fee study and determine what that cost of providing that service is.
Is, is, is there a cost to us of doing a fee study?
Yes, there is.
How much is that? I want to know what the cost benefit on this is.
It's just staff time.
City Manager?
Like the city attorney said, it's just staff time to do it.
Okay, so it's a pretty easy calculation, back-of-the-envelope type deal?
Um, it should be.
Okay, great.
And the council would end up having to approve that fee anyway.
Okay, great. Well, I, I mean, I, I didn't want to initiate a fee study, it's gonna cut, you know, it just, it didn't make sense, right?
Way to be fiscally conservative, I like it.
Cost benefit. Okay. And then, this is probably the last biggest point that I'm, I'm a little concerned with, is just the level of, uh, of privacy, right? So what, you know, obviously, we're gonna collect data, uh, names, addresses, date of birth, license numbers, and different, you know, point, pieces of information from people. Uh, how much of this is going to be public from both the, uh, the host's side as well as the guest's side? So I know we have to, the hosts have to keep the, the, um, guests' information for the la- the preceding three years. Uh, but my question is, how much of that are we receiving? Uh, how much of that is public? Or is there gonna be a, a database? Um, can any member of the public, um, access this information? And is there any, uh, sort of downside to the hosts, uh, of that information being publicly available? I, I know on the, on the website, when you go to reserve a property that you're gonna stay at, they don't actually give you the exact address. There's a map, and they provide a, a bubble radius where you can see, okay, I'll be in the general tower district area, I'll be here in this part of downtown Fresno. But, uh, only after you've actually reserved the, uh, rental, do they, uh, provide the actual address to you. So the, the website, the websites take precaution, uh, some privacy precautions. I want to know what's on our side, um, what information is protected and what information is public.
I don't think the ordinance has offered, provides that the city would receive the user information. It's only the owner information. And so if we don't have the information, then that information's not a public document pursuant to a PRA.
Okay, but with respect to the, the host, the owner, the, the person who's actually renting out the property to somebody, um, you know, how much of that, City Attorney, I mean, if you could advise us on this matter?
You've already provided it would be collecting minimal information for the permit. So I think it's gonna be name and contact information, and the addresses of the homes.
Yeah, 'cause to, to me, the point is that we have the information so we can enforce, uh, not necessarily to place a scarlet letter on the short-term rentals.
The, the point of the, uh, contact information, and just contact information of the owner is, should there be a problem at one of the Airbnbs, law enforcement has not had the ability to contact the owner. And that's the only information, name and number to contact somebody. Uh, the City of Fresno doesn't want any of this information. We certainly don't want it of their, people there, uh, renting the home. That's, that's up to the owners to do. So the only information that the city will have will be a name and, uh, of the owner and a phone number in case there's a problem.
Okay. Um, I think that's most of my amendments for now. Like you said, this is up for, uh, this is just an introduction. So thank you for accepting my amendments, and if we, as we're sleeping on this, I encourage all of my colleagues to, uh, do their own research, right? I know the co-sponsors looked at other cities, I looked at a few others, uh, some have some pretty good models. So a, a lot of the cities have more restrictive models than we have because of, uh, their, their housing issues are a little more exacerbated. So you have 90-day or 120-day limits, um, on the, on the rentals, which I don't, I don't think we're there yet. But again, this is a good framework to, uh, begin with. I will yield for now.
Thank you very much. The screen is clear. Uh, Member Karbasi?
Move to approve?
Sorry?
As, move to approve as amended, or are we still on a motion?
No, we're, I, I, I'm ready to go.
Okay.
I, I have questions, Council President.
Go ahead.
It's not the first question, but keep going.
City staff or the sponsors, how many Airbnbs do we have in the city currently?
I, I would, I would, I would, I mean, uh, when I looked on the website just a few days ago, uh, depending on what filter you had on, it was between $250 and $300. But that's just Airbnb. There are other websites, like VRBO, that also offer, offer short-term rentals, so Airbnb's probably the biggest.
I think Rena has some information.
Yeah, we were just, um, we were just looking at lunch, and there was only a handful, but again, I don't know what filters were used. And then Jennifer emailed me earlier about what was on there in June. Let me see. Jennifer, do you remember that off the top of your head?
So there's approximately 376 unique rentals, Airbnbs. Do we know how many of them are the problem? How many of them have been, um, have police been called to address loud parties? What's, I'm trying to understand what the scope of the problem is in our city that we're gonna pass a citywide ordinance?
Well, I think law enforcement would have been able to answer that, but they're not here.
Yeah. I think regardless of how many are the problem, this isn't about punishing anyone. This is gonna be about stopping the party houses. I think with the amendments Councilmember Asparza made, uh, I think it addresses all that. So, um, it's gonna go after the party houses and the party houses only.
Okay. What about the fines? Um, are, does this ordinance include any fines for folks who've been, violating the nuisance problems? Or are you simply proposing to revoke their permits completely?
The ordinance calls for a revocation of the permit. Doesn't list that they're gonna be fined.
The fine is they can't operate anymore.
Yep.
So every other system that we have in place includes fines, rent inspection program, code enforcement.
Counsel.
Everything includes fine. Why did we skip the fine structure here?
This ordinance provides that administrative penalties could be assessed, as the council would establish in the master fee schedule.
So they would, fines would be included?
It's up to council, yes.
We could.
So what's the proposal by the sponsors? Are you proposing to include fines, or simply go from your second violation to revocation of the permit?
Well, we're moving this forward for introduction today, uh, open to suggestions that you might have or anyone else does.
I, I think we, we should be consistent, and if, we should fine folks, you know? Clearly, if they're renting out their 4,000-square-foot home for additional income, then they should have the means to pay a fine. Because at the end of the day, the, what I'm hearing is the permit fee is structured to be very cost, um, very cost efficient, so it'll be a low fee. If we have 250 homes, a $60 fee for permit would generate about $15,000. That doesn't anywhere near cover enforcement. If these are gonna be, continue to be a problem, I think we should fine them and try to recover the cost for code enforcement or law enforcement enforcement, especially for the repeat offenders. So just thoughts for you guys to consider?
My, my amendment was for the TOT to go to code enforcement, not the application fee. The application fee covers staff time to process. The TOT is gonna go towards the, yeah.
Yeah, and the TOT fee wouldn't be sufficient to cover any enforcement. So I would just ask that you guys consider including fines as part of your ordinance, 'cause at the end of the day, we're gonna spend public resources managing somebody's private property. Then we should recover those fees and those costs. Um, if you do that, then I'm, I'm definitely open to supporting that.
Well, that's something, again, we can, we'll look at. We're doing this for introduction today, so certainly consider that.
We, we could consider giving...
I don't have a problem with fines.
Okay.
I mean, there, that's what most of our rules need enforcement, enforceability is. Some form of punishment, and that would be a fine, so I'm fine with that.
We give direction to code enforcement to bring up, uh, come up with a structure, a fairer structure.
Counsel, the, the ordinance does provide for fines. You would simply determine what those fines would be through the master fee schedule. In recent years, we've taken that approach, because it's easier to update that than it is changing an ordinance.
Absolutely. So as long as, um, the sponsors recognize that we are gonna eventually include a fine, when we determine what that appropriate fine level would be as a way to manage it, then I'm open to being supportive.
Maybe we'll find some things that are comparable and, um, provide that.
Okay. Member Karbasi?
I think that we started with a bill, and the sponsors were so gracious to listen to our concerns and make a lot of changes. Uh, the scope has changed to where it's business-friendly, it doesn't punish people, it stops the party houses. I, I expect a unanimous vote. I would like to see everyone vote for this, 'cause it's an introductory bill, and we can always make changes as we go along. But this process we've seen here, this is democracy at its best.
Thank you very much. So the screen is clear. We can do electronic voting. If you support, uh, this item, it's a yes. If opposed, it's a no. So please punch for introduction. Uh, this passes unanimously. I want to thank my co-sponsor working together to get this where we are today, and I think it'll benefit the community of Fresno. Thank you all very much. Let's move on now to, uh, pull consent items, uh, 1D, 1R, 1E, 1F. So we'll start with 1D. Whoever pulled it, please say your piece.
Oh, let me...
Yeah, yeah, it's you and I.
All right. So the question I had is...
Can you just leave that there?
This is on 1D, right?
Yeah.
How was, uh, the machine damaged? And I, I know you said it was some car hit it, but how, how'd that take place?
It was a car accident. Um, the car, um, was hit by a, a second vehicle and went right into the machine.
Okay, and these, uh, machines are $80 each?
I'm sorry?
Roughly $80,000 each, these machines?
Correct.
And just briefly, how is BRT doing? I mean, overall, since the start?
So overall, the service is great. Our problem has been with the machines. And we have been strongly engaged with the leadership, the new president of Genfair, to combat the issues that we faced with malfunctioning machines. And that's one of the reasons why we need a spare, because we have cannibalized our current spare by using that to supplant parts in other machines. We, Genfair will be here next week for the week. They have a software patch that they want to test, and we are withholding any payment to them until such time.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, I've got a quick question, though, Greg. I've gotten a couple of complaints from some of the writers on the Kings Canyon about the machines.
Yes.
Not working properly. What has been the overall success rate of the actual machines there on the corridor to where at one point, how many of the machines would you say are actually operational and correctly functioning?
So it varies. We, Genfair, the company that we bought the machines from, actually have their own technicians. Those technicians work, there are four of them, they work Monday through Friday. So if what we, one of the discussion points we're having is what happens when a machine malfunctions on a Friday night? Because then it's out of service all weekend. We also are having issues with what we call our VIP, which is actually the system that talks to us, that pops up different colors to tell us if a machine is acting right or not. And so that's one of the fixes in this software patch that Genfair is bringing to us next week. Things got so bad at one point that I wrote a really nasty letter to the president. That president actually ended up being terminated by his board for whatever reason. But the new president has engaged us. He's come out, he's sat with us, he's, he will be on this trip coming up. And every 30 days, we're having status conversations with the president of the company, as well as weekly conversations my staff have with his staff on issues that are affecting the machines. But they are a problem.
And that's been not just on Kings Canyon, but?
That's all over. That's all, all the machines, yes.
And then last question with regards to the BRT. You know, our high maintenance seniors, who are at the village. What, what is our success rate for folks that jump on the BRT and actually pay?
So we see a 30% evasion rate that we've been able to document. We have created two fair audit teams that are now led by a supervisor. They used to be led by Rick when he worked for us. But we are trying our best now to educate the public because there's a perception amongst all folks that this is the free bus, right? I think that came from your, one of your former colleagues, who preached that a lot. But we are really trying to educate folks on what this, and how to use the system, and the fact that you do need to show proof of payment.
All right. Thanks.
And then also to add to that, Councilmember, to make things easier, we're going to smart cards. So they're actually plastic tap cards. They look similar to, this is my LA Metro one when I went to the football game the other week. We'll be going to this, these cards, which will also help us with the machines in bringing down the ticket jams because it's a hard card versus a piece of paper.
So you purchase that, and then you just charge it?
You, it'll be free, but you charge it up.
Okay. Thank you.
Director, in your view, is it time for us to move to a new vendor? Or do you still have faith that the current vendor can make the adjustments and improve customer service?
If we would have had this conversation 90 days ago, I would have said, let's do like Las Vegas did, yank them out and sell them on eBay. But with the new president and his commitments, we've seen night and day when it comes to his staff. But we're also committed by the grant that we have to hold on to them for so long. And we look at them as 52 pass outlets also, or 53 because of the one at City Hall, pass outlets that people can utilize at any point in time, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we had, motion by Member Roberto Phil, second by Member Chavez. Any opposition? Passes 701R. Whoever pulled it?
Yes, that's, yeah. Yes, I pulled my item 1R. I wanted to just provide a little bit of context. I know a couple of the council members had questions. If we could rewind back to June, when we conducted the budget process, you'll remember that we included $85,000 for consulting services to evaluate the potential for enhanced infrastructure financing districts, community revitalization, investment authorities, just looking overall at bringing back the tax increment financing mechanism that we lost when redevelopment agencies were abolished about eight years ago. So that's what this is all about. These consultants, Cosmont Companies, they specialize in this precise service and helping municipalities find ways to finance their civic infrastructure and redevelop our areas using these, these tools. So they actually, the folks from Cosmont were actually here just a couple weeks ago now. They met with city staff, city manager, and several department directors, and got all their questions answered, collected all the data that they needed. And they are in the process of conducting phase one of the process. So they're looking, taking an objective look citywide at what areas have potential for that property tax increment growth and where might most benefit our community. And, you know, when that is completed, we'll bring it back to council, we'll evaluate. My primary motive in my district has been Blackstone. I think this is going to be a critical component in redeveloping that corridor and the inner city, central Fresno. But they are exploring, again, citywide. And so as that comes back to us, all of you, whether it affects, impacts your district or not, will have a chance to take a look at the map and decide if you, if you think that's something that would benefit your district. So here, we're just allocating the $85,000 that we had set aside in the budget for these services.
Motion to approve.
My motion to approve, and Councilmember Arias will second.
Thank you for recognizing protocol. I have a motion by Member Asparza, second by Member Arias. Any opposition? Passes 701E.
60, Karbasi is off the dais.
Thank you. 61E, please. Whoever pulled it, let's rock.
Yeah, that's the item that I pulled. I still, one of the issues that I had initially when we had tabled this item was that we had only received one interested party. Just trying to understand, and I know that I reached out to Access Plus Capital. I've also talked to a couple of the other chambers. Is there a reason that you guys feel that we're not kind of receiving other folks interested in competing for these dollars?
Well, the feedback that we're getting, first of all, I'm Kelly Trevino with the Mayor's Office Economic Development. The reasons that we're getting back, so before we went out to bid, we actually reached out to Access Plus Capital along with a handful of other prospective bidders to let them know that it was coming up, in hopes that we would get more of a response. We saw that a number of those organizations did pull the item off of Planet Bids, but they didn't bid for whatever reason. We reached out to them. I called each of them individually, and I got a number of responses, everything from it's just not our ball of wax, not our, not our forte, or they didn't feel that it would be a big moneymaker for them, and it really isn't. It doesn't generate a lot of income. It's kind of just a niche that SenCal Business Finance really has done well, and it's part of what they do, what part of a larger service that they offer.
Do you also think it's the way that we craft the RFP? Because I know sometimes the ways the city crafts RFPs, it kind of weeds out people and because you, we write them in such a way that it makes it hard for other folks to also want to bid?
I didn't hear that from any of the applicants I reached out to, that they felt in any way that they shouldn't bid on it. It really was.
What other groups did you reach out to?
We reached out to a couple of financiers in the Bay Area, Opportunity Fund, TMC Financing, they're located in Northern California and Southern California. We reached out to Valley Small Business Development Corporation, and then the Fresno CDFI, which is Access Plus Capital.
Would any of the, our local chambers be, have the ability or capacity to do this kind of stuff, or they don't do?
I don't think so.
They don't do?
No, I don't think that that's in their purview.
Okay. Because I know that there is entrance, interest from the Asian, what is that group called? Asian American Business?
Oh, A-Bert? Asian Business? Okay.
Yeah. And they said they would be interested, but they don't feel like they've ever been, been reached out to or that. So I'm trying to understand. I just want to make sure that we're truly being out there and making this available for, especially, I'm particularly concerned, and I know that there's been some good, there are small businesses that I've noted that they've made loans to. But I would really like to see more intentional outreach to the very small businesses that can't access the traditional dollars.
Right.
And that constantly are up against having barriers. And so that's where I'm having a challenge with, where I feel that we haven't, you know, and, you know, maybe SenCal has done a good job in the last 10 years, but I'd like to see more competition.
This is the second item in the last couple of months that we discussed regarding outreach and the competitive process. What you're asking us to do may be difficult. I don't know how staff would know who's interested. The processes that we posted, and this one was posted for five weeks, five weeks, so that people who are interested in that type of business have the opportunity to bid on it, which they would register on bids online under categories and then, then be able to respond. So unless we know somebody is interested in something, it's hard for us to know who to reach out to.
Well, I know, but you guys have also continuously heard in terms of the interest from some of the council members to see more intentional outreach to small businesses, minority-owned businesses. I know that we've had this conversation.
Generically, we could do that.
We want to make sure that when we, I understand that you can't go pick and choose, but we can do a broader outreach if that's the goal and if that's, you know, what folks up here want.
And we can certainly look at that, broader outreach related to local companies in general. But we can't go out and say, hey, listen, are you interested in this bid?
I get that. But I think that there are a lot of folks that are intimidated by our procurement process, especially if they've never done it, and if, if they don't have the, maybe the qualifications that you guys are looking for because we're looking, you know, for people that have 10 years' experience. And so how do these small businesses ever get the opportunity to even participate when no one's giving them the opportunity to build that experience?
And I understand that we in the administration also have to look at, do we, balancing the opportunity for somebody with less experience versus the risk of them not performing well because of a lack of experience? So that's why we have the qualifications that we write into the bid specifications so that we can ensure whatever we're purchasing or procuring turns out right.
Yeah, but I think it's a matter of policy, right? Because I think that as a matter of policy, in my perspective, we should be utilizing some resources to make sure that we're investing back in our local community and giving opportunity to small businesses that are here.
We can certainly look at that.
So I know that my colleague, Councilmember Karbasi, and I have been talking about, how do we better, how do we improve the procurement process so that all small businesses have a better shot at getting these types of opportunities? So those were my concerns. I don't know if there's anything else from my other colleagues. I would suggest that we limit the contract. I know you guys were thinking of a 10-year contract. I would suggest that if we do, I'll make a motion to only do half, half the time, and then come back and see if we can do broader outreach to folks. So that would be my motion.
Member Karbasi.
All right, so real, I have some questions, I'm sorry. Really quick, talking about the motion, so we have had a 10-year contract with SenCal already.
Right.
And they've demonstrated they performed well, correct?
Absolutely. We have an A rating with the EDA. We're one of only, I think, 3% of these revolving loan funds countrywide that have a, have an A rating at, we're like at 97 out of 100%. Once we have this administrative plan that you guys are going to hopefully approve later, we will likely get up to that 100%.
And I see a lot of businesses on this list I have with me, Nancy's Boutique, for example, or JR Sports, or a chiropractic office. And they have working capital for a fixed asset. Now, there are cases where getting a fixed asset, like a piece of, asset, like a piece of equipment, can make a huge difference for them and their employees to make more money.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So one good thing is, Councilmember Sorri and I, we're going to have workshops for, in general, RFP processes. So people that don't normally apply in that process can know about them. And I think that's going to help the administration, where we're going to advertise ourselves, hey, this is what you can do. You can, you know, you know, if you have a small family business, become a vendor. But going back to this specifically, if we, this has already been postponed in the last meeting. If this is postponed again, which I do not support, what's the effect it's going to have on people applying? What's the effect it's going to have on some of the businesses we have now?
Well, we did just sign an amendment to our current agreement, so we are still in an agreement with SenCal for, until January.
Right.
So we're not out of compliance as far as our agreement. But to go back out to bid, you know, we had only one applicant before. I don't know if there would be others interested. I don't know if.
And I believe, no, that's fine. Perfect. And I believe that we're going, talking about going from 10 years to five years, but there is language in here that we can always cancel the agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that is in the agreement that we can cancel, I believe, within 30 days.
Okay. So we always have that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it really wouldn't make a difference if it's five years or 10 years in the sense that we have that right as a council?
Right. And can I just say that one of the main reasons why we go with a 10-year agreement is because these businesses form a relationship with their lender. And to move it around three years, five years can be tumultuous for the businesses. We want them to be able to form a relationship with the lender. The loans are typically, I think, eight to 10 years long in some cases. So we want them to be able to have that continuity.
And for me, as a business owner, stability is really important. Chaos is a bad thing. And we want to also have good faith with SenCal as a city that, you know, they've done their part, we're going to do our part, and continue that relationship. Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate that comment, but I just want to remind the council that it's very rare, if any, that we give anybody a 10-year contract. So I recognize that there's relationships built, but our typical contracts are usually three years with two one-year renewals, giving everybody flexibility to be able to make adjustments. But a 10-year contract essentially commits two councils to the same vendor. You know, of course, there's always provisions to revoke or change things, but a 10-year gives me pause and concern, gives a significant amount of time. And there's quite a bit of changes that occur over a 10-year period. So I would support the councilwoman's motion to say it's a five-year agreement, there's no disruption to businesses, there's no disruption to loan program, and it gives folks time to figure out how to do additional outreach so that more businesses can benefit.
Member Karbasi.
One more thing. So I'm going to ask one more time. So SenCal has honored their commitments for the last 10 years.
Yes, for, yes.
So one thing I really worry about, perception matters, and unfortunately, people say Fresno's not business-friendly. And we have all these great businesses benefiting from this agreement. Now, one more time, if we choose, we have 30 days, we can end the contract if we wanted to. That's a great thing.
I believe it's 30 days.
Right. Okay. So I just worry that they've done their part, and we have no reason, you know, we had a 10-year agreement, it worked just fine. There is no reason to change this practice. So that's my concern.
Okay, the screen is clear. On the motion, since E and F are very, very similar, is the motion to approve E and F? Thank you. I'll just try to get to a vote, folks.
The motion is to approve both items, making them a five-year agreement.
Instead of 10, okay.
All right, screen is clear. Any opposition?
I'm opposed.
So it passes 61.
So it passes six-one, member, sorry.
You're not gonna, okay, I'm sorry. I'm opposed to changing it all of a sudden to five years, uh, instead of ten, so opposed.
Okay, passes five-two with members Bredafield and Carbasi voting no. Okay, let's go to item, uh, three G, approve a city Fresno tax rebate agreement with Darling Ingredients.
Council President, before we leave contested consent, um, Councilmember Soria had pulled item one G, as in George, and that item was actually, uh, we had a request from the mayor's office to pull that from the agenda, so we...
So we're good?
Yes.
Perfect. Three G, uh, City Attorney's Office.
Just a reminder that when we appoint people, we should check their addresses, where they live, 'cause they should be living in the city of Fresno.
Thank you very much. Three G, please. Let's, I gotta get this moving.
Good afternoon, Council, Lori Pavini with the City Attorney's Office. Council previously approved a disposition agreement and development agreement with Darling Ingredients, and that agreement included, among other things, uh, rebates of property taxes and certain sales and use taxes paid on purpose, purchases of equipment. This agreement before you today is a property tax, is a tax rebate agreement that's, implements what was previously approved by the council. Uh, I understand there was a question on one of the provisions that says it's not a pledge of sales tax revenue, and that is a standard provision in these types of agreements, but be assured, the agreement does require receipt of the tax revenue by the city before there is an obligation to pay the rebate.
Thank you, motion to approve.
Member Bredafield.
Yeah, so there's a property tax rebate for thirty years, can you just address that? 'Cause I, I know some councilmembers have concerns with the Alta and, uh, Amazon issues regarding rebates, I'm just curious about that, can you just explain that briefly?
The property tax rebate is, uh, for thirty years following close of escrow. Uh, the property is currently owned by the city of Fresno, so it's not on the property tax rolls now, but it will become taxable, uh, once it's transferred to Darling, and for thirty years from the closing date, the, the full amount of the property taxes will be rebated to Darling. There's also a sales and use tax rebate, um, for purchases of equipment, taxes paid on purchases of equipment, um, for one year, fall, up to one year following, uh, the certificate of completion will be rebated back to Darling.
So those sales taxes and property taxes will be rebated back to the business? Wow. I mean, I'm in support of a surprise that Councilmember Arias is.
All right, okay, before we get too far down the road...
Thank you for reminding us that's a one-year sales refund versus a thirty-year sales refund.
Thirty-year property tax rebate, Mr. Arias.
All right, the screen is clear, I need to take this out to the public, anyone wish to address this from the public? Uh, opportunity is now to address it, you know, three minutes, seeing none. Uh, I believe I heard a motion, I did not hear a second. Member, uh, Arias motioned it, and seconded by Member Carbasi, is there any opposition? Passes six-zero, member Soria absent. Let's go to, uh, we're almost done, four A, uh, council boards and commissions, et cetera, I don't know if there's any additions, deletions, or corrections, I know, uh, um, member Chavez has a clarification point?
Just for, I think it's item, uh, twenty-one, I spoke to the clerk about that earlier, that is actually not myself, but Councilmember Sparsa on the Parks and Public Safety Committee.
Any other corrections, additions, or deletions to four A?
Yes, Council President, um, this is, I mean, these actions have been taken unilaterally on my part. I, uh, did appoint Councilmember Arias to the Finance and Audit Committee, and I made Councilmember Bredafield the Vice Chair, I'm the Chairman.
Okay.
So I sent a memo to the clerk, but just for the record, those, those changes, so that committee is now full.
We'll include that on the next time we reference these, uh, uh, boards and commissions. Anyone else have any additions, deletions? Uh, Member Carbasi, anything you wanna, there's a lot of vacancies, we can share your, your wisdom and insight.
I'll, I'll ask if anybody, you're, you're stuck with it unless somebody else wants to.
So, uh, Member Carbasi, next meeting, if you have something that you see on this that's inviting, let us know, and, and we will address that. Anything else from, uh, committee members, boards, otherwise? Okay, fine, thank you.
Uh, Council, Council, um, President, uh, just wanted to make sure, well, I'm also Chairman of the, uh, liaison, the School Liaison Subcommittee, uh, so it's myself, Councilmember Arias, and Chavez, um, just wanted to see if there's any interest, uh, at this point, if anybody else wanted to be on that committee. We have our next meeting actually coming up on, on Monday.
Well, you, you have three, you're at the limit.
Yeah, I mean, it's fluid.
Councilmember Carbasi, would you be interested?
What time Monday? No, I'm interested.
Well, no, so, i- i- I mean, we can discuss, and, and, uh, just wanted to let you know, we'll, we'll be here in the chambers at six PM on Monday, uh, only three of us are on the committee, uh, we'll have, it'll be us, uh, invited, county trustees from Central Unified, Fresno Unified, Clovis Unified, Sangre Unified, and Clovis Community College, Clovis, sorry, uh, State Center Community College District, um, so they will, uh, be joining us here in the chambers on Monday.
No, I'd be honored, um, Mr. President.
Do you wanna reserve the right to comment on that later, make a decision?
Sure, yeah, so, no, no, yeah, no, no need to make a decision, I was just throwing it out there.
Okay. I do have one, though.
As, as some to chew on.
Thank you. The Highway Ninety-Nine Beautification Committee, there's a vacancy, or there's two?
Uh...
Yeah, it's our district, so...
Sure, uh, I don't know if we need a motion, but...
I'll make a motion. Bad, Mr. Carbasi.
I'll second it, any opposition?
I'll just submit that motion to make him the Chair of the committee.
Yeah.
Now, uh, anything else? Any, any more committees? You can always join or, or not, that's an option each of us have. Okay, we'll close that, uh, item, we'll go to four C, uh, bill for introduction regarding code enforcement citations and serial violators. This is Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President, I just wanna give you a really quick summary of it. Uh, as you know, we, um, the council had passed a rental inspection housing act, um, and as we've implemented, we've learned a few lessons, and one of the lessons that we learned is small group of individuals have taken advantage of the system, um, and have failed to manage their properties appropriately. We call these individuals the serial violators, who have become a financial burden, um, for the city. In order to fulfill the intent of the rental inspection program, we wanna make sure that we have closed any loopholes, and that everybody's held accountable for managing their properties. Some individuals in this city own hundreds of properties, some own thousands of properties, and it's been a task to keep up with all their properties, noticing them, having them fix it, supervising the, that task, and, and the default essentially has become that we've become the property manager for a few of the property owners in this city. So what the amendment to this ordinance would do was, would be to establish the definition of a serial violator to someone who receives more than ten or more citations for ten or more properties in one year, and if they continue receiving citations, um, then there would be a new fine structure that would go as follows, one thousand for the first offense, um, after they've been classified, five thousand for the second, and up to ten thousand for the third. And, um, this would ensure that the owners who operate thousands of units in our city, uh, don't continue to take up all the time of staff, um, when they should be hiring more folks to manage their own properties. Um, and if you have any questions, our City Attorney is prepared to address them. Sorry, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Member Carbasi? Okay, uh, anybody else punch up? Member Bredafield, thank you.
Yeah, um, Councilman Arias, if you could just mention, you said something about ten violations, and then it was, something would start, are you saying, then you said the first violation would be X amount, second, after ten violations that would start?
So the way it reads, um, Councilmember, is if somebody has more than ten citations in, in, uh, for ten or more properties in one year, then they would be classified as serial violator. And then any violation after that, um, they would receive a thousand-dollar citation, the second violation would be up to five thousand, and the third up to ten thousand. And what we're trying to deal with is a few property owners who own hundreds and thousands of units, every time we cite them, um, they, they address them, but we end up spending mo, the majority of our time just with those very few property owners, 'cause they have so many units.
So these are, these are for people who have multiple units?
Absolutely.
Got it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak? Here we have a motion, I haven't heard a second. Motion by Member Arias, seconded by Member Soria, is there any opposition? Passes six-zero, member Chavez absent. Okay, that takes us to our last item on the, uh, agenda, four B.
Counsel?
Yes.
That, that last item was not taken out to the public, we should at least...
I'm sorry. Anyone in the public wish to comment on that item, that is four C, please come forward? Seeing none, public comment is closed. And any opposition? Seeing none, passes six-zero, member Chavez absent, thank you. Now, four B, and then we'll go into closed session. It's a resolution joining the amicus brief, uh, before the United States Supreme Court. Uh, that's sponsored by, um, Vice President Arias, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, I think we've covered, um, the purpose of this, um, resolution is to join more than forty cities across the nation that have, um, written in support of the Dreamers across the country, of which we have approximately five thousand in the city of Fresno, and they represent about four hundred million dollars of wages earned annually in our city. Uh, this, um, resolution would not cost us any resources locally, 'cause it's been fully funded by the city of Los Angeles and the County of Los, Los Angeles, and with that, I'll just make a motion to approve.
Member Arias motion, Chavez second, the, uh, anybody in the public wish to talk about this, I do have cards here. First is, uh, Juan Martin, if you'd like to come up and address the council with your name and address, followed by Carlos Corrio. Are those the two cards? Whoop, I have a third card. The next speaker after those two will, uh, be Bernard Renoso. Name, address, and phone number, you have three minutes, sir, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Juan Martin Corrio, and I come in voice as a DACA recipient when I was just three, thirteen years old, me and my dad. Juan Carlos spoke at the Sacramento, uh, for all the Dreamers here in California in the valley, and it was an honor to represent them with my voice. DACA has helped me in some way, having a work permit, and having not to fear if I'm going to be taken away from my family. Now, being able to obtain my official license for driving inspires me to keep working hard for it. I, I came to this beautiful country when I was three years old, and I, throughout this past years, I've learned about how is to fight for what you want, and, uh, to obtain your goal. And I've been through a lot of racism, a lot of critiquing, just because of my color and just because we come from another country, but sometimes it's, it's just in, in how you, you treat the person, it's not how you, you look at the person, never judge DACA by, by its cover. DACA, um, some reason, it has opened the doors for me to have a work permit and to continue being here. I graduated from Fresno Adult School, and I'm finally right now studying in Fresno City College. I would love to show my parents and to show all those people that don't believe in us, um, that we're able to do the same thing others are able to do in America. And as a DACA recipient, I'm a strong worker, and I'm able, I've been able to adapt and, and for some reason, continuing life, trying to expect these, uh, obstacles to become harder for me, that way I can be able to, to finish it. Um, my major right now is generalism, I also helped this great old guy do his, his magazines, and I'm a news director, and, uh, at the same time, I learn from him, and it makes me, it makes me continue for going for my goals. Thank you, everybody, thank you for continuing with the DACA. I would love this to continue, because it's gonna still help me in the future, help more of my, 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 my brothers here in Fresno, California. God bless you guys, God bless my country, and God bless America, thank you. I also wanted to share that anything's possible, and, and I, since I graduated from high school, I want to graduate from college and Fresno State, and going forward, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations, and keep up your good work. Next is Bernard Renoso, and then we'll open it up to the public in general, uh, you, you do not have to have a card to speak today.
Good afternoon, everyone, Ben Renoso, I'm the Director with the Dream Center at Fresno City College, also Director of the Trio Programs there. Uh, this is Erica Rommel, she's one of our counselors as well for the Dream Center. Um, esteemed city council members and colleagues, uh, since our doors opened back in two thousand fifteen, we've seen undocumented Dream students, um, come to our office in regards to their academics and well-being, to make sure that they're successful. Um, this past year, we had three hundred and eighty-five students come to, through our doors, of that, we had over a thousand two hundred visits, that means our students are continuing to come visit our center and, and plead their, their, their case to, to be educated and to be able to continue on with their education. Um, our students, the one thing that they're talking about is the uncertainty of work. They're going towards an education, they're doing well, they're taking their twelve units, they're doing everything that we're asking them to do, the only thing that they have is that fear of being able to work. And so today, uh, we come in solidarity with you, uh, through the State Center, along with our President, Dr. Carol Goldsmith, who are in full support of this, and, and we thank you for, for taking this into account. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to come forward and give us your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to address this issue?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Margarita Rocha, I'm the Executive Director of Central La Familia Advocacy Services. I am here in support of the resolution that is before you. I, I wanna tell you that we have been able to assist several eligible DACA individuals, um, in, in terms of seeing how their hopes and dreams and what they're looking for, seeing the parents' hopes and dreams for these young people, um, are very hard to imagine if you personally don't see it. We also see the fear of the same individuals, because their world is always in a balance. And so I am here to support this and ask for your, your support to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up, if you wish to speak, and, uh, again, name, address, and, uh, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hola, mi nombre es Juan Carlos Carrillo, papá de Juan Martín Carrillo.
Hello, uh, my name is Juan Carlos Carrillo, Father of, uh...
Juan Martín Carrillo.
Martín Carrillo.
Vengo aquí en nombre de nuestra comunidad de Fresno.
I come before you, um, as a member of the community of Fresno.
Soy vicepresidente del DACA.
I am the Vice President of...
Universidad de Padres.
Uh, parent university?
Eh, y también presidente de la asociación Guadalupana de San Antonio Mary Clarete, de la iglesia de San Antonio Mary Clarete. Presidente?
Uh, most of the president of the, uh, uh, the Guadalupanos at, uh, Saint, Saint, uh, San Antonio Mary Clarete.
Gerente general también del periódico Sol Azteca.
Gerente?
Gerente general.
I'm one of the general managers at, uh, the newspaper, uh, Sol Azteca.
Y cuando puedo entre semana, soy como cualquier padre, trabajo en la jardinería, en la construcción.
And during the week, like any other father, I work in construction, I work in, uh, as a lawn care.
Y DJ también, y con mi, con mi este, eh, mi permiso de la ciudad de Fresno.
And I have my own DJ, um, that would, my own business as a DJ, uh, to the city of Fresno.
Pagando mis impuestos correctamente.
Paying my taxes, um, as I should.
Con eso me presento porque muchos como yo están con sus hijos soñadores.
I give a little bit of who I am, so that, um, you understand that I, as a father, um, am a dreamer like, um, the ch, my child who came before me.
Soñando con un futuro mejor.
Dreaming of a better future.
Esperando contar siempre con su apoyo de ustedes.
Hoping that we can count on your continued support.
Ya que ustedes son nuestros líderes en Fresno, California.
Since you are our leaders here in the city of Fresno, California.
Y nosotros como padres, como activistas en Fresno.
And us as parents, as activists in Fresno.
Seguimos luchando como aquel soñador, Martin Luther King Jr.
We continue to fight like that dreamer, Martin Luther King Jr.
Sergio Chavez.
Sergio Chavez.
Dolores Huerta. Soñando que toda la comunidad inmigrante sea libre.
Dreaming that all the immigrant community can be free.
Y que también nosotros, respetando nuestras leyes de Fresno, de California.
And us also respecting the laws of this city of Fresno, California.
Siempre tratando de ser una buena persona.
Always trying to be a good person.
Pero también tratando de apoyar a nuestros soñadores, a nuestros estudiantes.
But at the same time, supporting our Dreamers, our students.
Ellos son el futuro de Fresno.
They are the future of Fresno.
Hace como siete, ocho meses, tuvimos un intento de homicidio, mi hijo y yo. Estuvimos a punto de perder la vida.
A couple of months ago, we were almost victims of a homicide. We were close to losing our lives.
Y Dios nos ha concedido estar vivos todavía y seguir para adelante.
God has given us the ability to continue living and continue forward.
Mucha gente tiene miedo a hablar aquí. Mucha gente tiene miedo de venir a decir lo que ellos sienten.
A lot of people are afraid to come forward and come speak their mind.
Y sé que hay mucho tiempo como para explicarles qué tanto miedo tiene nuestra comunidad inmigrante.
And I know there's not enough time for us to go into how much fear there is in our immigrant community.
Orgullosamente vengo a decirles, en nombre de toda nuestra comunidad de soñadores, de estudiantes, con todo el corazón, en nombre de Dios, que cada uno de ustedes se toque el corazón y sigan apoyando a nuestros estudiantes soñadores.
And I proudly come before you on behalf of the Dreamers, the students, and I ask you to look deep into your hearts, and when you vote today, vote in favor of our students, our Dreamers.
Gracias de todo corazón, de parte de toda la comunidad, por todo lo que ustedes hacen. Ustedes son nuestros líderes de Fresno, y queremos seguir teniendo ese apoyo de ustedes.
Thank you for your support. You are the leaders of the city of Fresno, and we want to remind you, as leaders, we want to continue to have your support for our immigrant community here in Fresno.
No importando la raza, el color, tu idioma, todos somos uno, y necesitamos ser un equipo, todos para construir nuestro Fresno aún más grande, así como amamos nuestro país, amamos este país de Norteamérica.
Without looking at our color, our race, our status, taking into consideration that we are all equal, we are all one, we are all members of the same community, even though we are from a different country, we love both this country and our own home countries.
Gracias por su apoyo. Que Dios me los bendiga a todos ustedes. Gracias.
Thank you for your support, and may God bless you all.
Anyone else in the public wish to come forward and speak? This is the time and place to do so. You'll provide your name and address. You'll have three minutes. You can pull that right down to speaking level.
Thank you. My name is Erica Ramos, and I want to share my story today. I've never shared my story before, but after hearing the stories that were told today, I am brave to share my story. I work as a counselor at the Dream Center, as you may know, but I am also a DACA recipient. And without DACA, I will not be able to support the undocumented students that I support today. Every day, every week, I work with students. So I please ask your support towards all our students here in the Central Valley, our students here in Fresno, to continue the support and hopefully the DACA program. I grew up in the city of Hanford, and I did not have the privilege of having all the opportunities that there are today. I went to college, and I am proud to say I have a master's degree. And it is a privilege to work every day with Dreamers who want to continue educating themselves. So I please ask your support for all those Dreamers that I help and myself. Thank you.
Thank you for having the courage to share, Erica.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Okay, Mr. Love, you got to stay focused.
Thank you. My name is David Love, number four. I'm voicing over to Washington, D.C. I'm talking about Building 429, only a true saint, only a white dove from the home population, the one hundred at the one hundred door, the heart in the mountain, not the U. C. D.
Point of order, Council President. If he's not on topic, do we have to continue?
Well, Mr. Love.
Hong Shongs or Dorros.
Mr. Love. Listen to me.
God is Satan that's going against.
We're talking about a certain issue, and you have to address that issue. Okay, otherwise, I'm sorry, sir. You've had your opportunity, so you'll have to have a seat. Thank you. All right. With that, we've closed public comment. I'm looking at my screen, and Member Brettafield is first up.
Yes, I want to address this resolution on a number of levels. First of all, in terms of clarifying, in the resolution, there are some numbers that are said, and I'd like you to clarify that. It says DACA recipients make up twenty-seven percent of all sales office and administrative workers nationwide. Now, in our, just doing a search, it says there's about nine point nine million workers nationwide. We have about seven hundred thousand DACA nationwide.
Yeah. Council member, just to correct the record, it was miswritten, it was written incorrectly. What it's intended to say is that of the nearly million DACA recipients, twenty-seven percent work in that industry.
Okay, not nationwide.
Correct.
All right. Now, is that the same thing with the next line, food preparation service?
Correct.
Farm workers? Because that's not accurate either?
It's a percentage of the million DACA recipients.
Okay. And that's the same with U.S. construction and production jobs?
Correct.
Okay. So if you approve this resolution, I mean, it is incorrect what's being approved. The numbers are completely false. Just want to be clear, if the council wants to approve numbers that are accurate, this is not the document.
Well, just to be clear, I'm happy to amend it so that it reads correctly as intended. It is supposed to read, of the million DACA recipients, a percentage of those are as laid out in the document. So we will be happy to correct that record with the city clerk.
Okay. And as I've looked at and studied this and researched this, I've looked back in terms of 2012 with President Obama enacting DACA. I believe there's about seven hundred thousand. You're saying there's a million DACA recipients? At least that's what I've seen. Now, these folks are protected from deportation by DACA. The argument, I guess, in favor of the program is that these folks didn't choose to break the law. That's absolutely clear, and they shouldn't be punished because parents violated immigration laws. And I understand that, I certainly do. But these laws should be clearly changed by Congress. It should not be a unilateral decision by any president. And President Obama, when he enacted DACA, even acknowledged that he probably didn't have the authority to do so, and that is why the current president is trying to rescind that, because it needs to be enacted by Congress. If Congress enacts DACA, it's actually legal, but it is not legal at this point. And there was an effort last year, as you may recall, by the president to approve DACA with Congress. He wanted in exchange billions of dollars for the wall. They couldn't come to an agreement, so the DACA situation in terms of its legality still remains fixed, in a sense, because it's not enacted by Congress. Having said that, we've seen that providing amnesty and potential citizenship to DACA recipients and other people here illegally, before we've secured any borders, just as was done in 1986 by President Reagan, didn't solve the problem. They had the Immigration Reform and Control Act in 1986. It was supposed to stem the problem of illegal immigration. It didn't. It actually resulted in three more million illegal immigrants shortly thereafter. So this problem has not been resolved. Now, I completely agree. This is not about race, color, religion, sex, or anything else. This is about legal and following laws in our country. You know, I'm concerned about all our citizens. I'm concerned about our citizens who are here legal, our citizens who are here legally who are also Dreamers. They too have dreams of college and seeking employment and starting families and achieving the American dream, just as everyone else does. And for me, I support immigration, but legal immigration. And undocumented is the term we give and give new nomenclature for people who are really here illegally. We say undocumented, but it really reflects that people are here illegally, whether it's their own fault or not, that's a fact. And at some point, we all have to recognize that we're a nation of laws. We either are a nation of laws or we are not a nation of laws. We can't pick and choose which laws we want to follow. Equal justice means under the law. Lady justice is blind. That means justice without regard for wealth, power status, or being politically correct. For me, we need to find a way to stop what's going on at the border in terms of illegal immigration. We need to stop offering all kinds of benefits to people that come here illegally. We need to fix our border. We need to correct the policies that reinforces people coming here illegally. And the reason why people come here is because this is the greatest country on earth. There's no doubt about it. Even our folks here who came here, who seem like great people, acknowledge that this is a great country, and it is a great country. But the bottom line is we are a nation of laws. Regardless of how you want to spin this or be politically correct, people who are here legally have the same dreams. They're Dreamers too. Those that argue DACA contribute to our society and economy. I don't disagree with that. These folks represent that. But that doesn't rationalize ignoring or breaking of our laws or the unfairness to those that follow our laws who wait in line and come here legally. So I can't support this because we are a nation of laws, and we can't pick and choose. And I have tremendous sympathy for people who are here, didn't come here of their own volition, and are making their dreams come true. That's what makes this country great. But we either follow the laws or we don't, and picking and choosing isn't the way to go. And the fact is, people are here illegally, and we have to acknowledge that. So I won't be in favor of this resolution.
Member Chavez?
It's what makes our country so great that we can agree to disagree with, you know, your statements, Councilman Brettafield. Back in 2013, when I was on the school board, we actually secured the very first Dream Center. I believe it was in the Central Valley. I was able to procure the dollars, and at the time, my colleague, Councilman Barrios, was over there as a director of Parent University, and we were actually able to start that. That transitioned now into the big Dream Center that you good folks work in, and it was badly needed. And I remember that conversation because when I met with those twelve students that were in that high school and had that conversation with them, and they shared with me what life was like, not having that certainty about your future, about your family, and actually having a plan in case your parents were deported. And so we worked together and we got that Dream Center built. I also want to remind our folks that I agree a hundred percent that this is a federal issue, and, you know, I think everybody here supports comprehensive immigration for, but absent of that, and absent, quite honestly, of the incompetency that we have coming out of D.C., we're forced to deal with a lot of these issues at the local level. And I want to remind everybody that back in 2019, when the Central Valley was devastated by the drought, and we had everybody that was marching for water, and I remember the signs that said, "More water, more jobs." There were farmers, there were farm workers, and if you go back and you look at those pictures, you have farm workers that had their children besides them with those same signs because they knew that we were all in this together. Those children that you saw in those pictures back then are the Dreamers of today. When the Central Valley needed their help, they came to help, they marched, they supported. To me, I've taken tough votes on this, council. This is one of the easiest votes that I can take, and I will absolutely support signing on to the amicus brief for the Dreamers here in the U.S., and I hope my colleagues will too. Thank you.
Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President, and I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Chavez and his comments, and the reason why it is important for the city of Fresno to step up and stand with, in solidarity with our Dreamers. I want to thank Juan and Erica for being brave, especially during these times when people are being demonized and immigrants are being targeted. I commend you for being brave and talking about your story because it's not that people are just here, they're undocumented. They are our brothers and sisters. They are our relatives. They are our neighbors. They are the students that I teach every single day. And inaction by this council actually not only cost us financially, but I think it's also a moral issue that at the end of the day, we're all people. And yes, we're all in this together. Again, just repeating what Councilmember Chavez said, absent of what has, the lack of inaction from Congress in doing the job to fix the issue, I think that it is our responsibility as local leaders to say, this impacts our community because thousands of Dreamers live in the city of Fresno, thousands of students and DACA recipients. We've invested in them. We've invested in them through our public education system by providing them the services for them to be successful. So we can't pull the plug, and we can't let the feds pull the plug and just stand still when we know that this issue is impacting us locally. And so I want to thank my other council colleagues that are supportive of this. This is an issue about people, not just undocumented. This is about our families. So I want to say that I stand with all of you guys in solidarity.
Member Karabasi?
To Erica and Juan, I want to thank you both for coming here. Juan, you mentioned how, you know, it's difficult for people to truly understand what you're going through, but I can tell when you're talking, not only are you heartfelt, but you do feel fear. I want you to know that in this building, you shouldn't have to ever feel fear. This is your government too. Now, in 2013, one thing you should know is this council, including my predecessor, took a unanimous vote. We're nonpartisan, but this was a bipartisan vote to approve, and you really should get this document. Sorry, you should get this document because we voted, they voted, not only to recognize DACA, but to call for comprehensive immigration reform. So I encourage you to talk to the clerk and get this document. The issue, though, is that this is a national issue, and we, it would be nice, you know, this is my second meeting, and this is a new council, if we can start setting the precedent where we're going to stop talking about national issues. As important as they are, this body lacks the authority. That authority lies with the federal government and with Congress. And I don't want to divide us. I think it's important we come together and talk about issues like safety in our neighborhoods, access to park space, homelessness, and talk about how we can improve the quality of life for all residents, including those in our community with DACA status. So, you know, I, again, a couple of weeks ago, when I first came on, one of the council members made a great compliment about me, that he likes me. So, you know, I, again, a couple of weeks ago, when I first came on, one of the council members made a great compliment about me, that he likes me because I'm not going to wade into the national issues. I'm going to focus on my community. And you are a part of this community, and I want to focus on your quality of life here. So I do support you, but I'm going to respectfully abstain because we need to change the precedent that we're not going to wade into these national issues and we don't have the authority to do that. Oh, one last thing. We do have the option as individuals to go to dakascotus.com and we can use our titles and we can join the Amicus brief. And I prefer we all do that. I'm sure I'm going to be outvoted here, but yeah, I will respectfully abstain.
Thank you. Member Sparza, you're next.
I'm going to be supporting this resolution today. I think what we're talking about here is not whether, you know, anything is legal or illegal. We're filing the Amicus brief, just stating the city's position that if, you know, DACA was to be rescinded, it would not only be the individual lives of these 5,000-plus people in our community, it's going to be felt upon all of us and this entire economy, city coffers and revenues and such. So I want to bring the conversation back to what we're actually discussing. We are, we are a nation of laws, but we're also a nation of immigrants. Very few of us and our descendants are actually from here. We all came here in search of a better life. And our dreamers and folks who are here undocumented currently are only the latest addition to that composition of the American dream. And so, again, the legality of any program is up to the Supreme Court. That's our judicial system. And it'll be decided there. This is just us weighing in to acknowledge the impact to us as city leaders and thereby the entire community here in Fresno. I have to disagree with some of the comments that I've heard up here. I think us as a body, as a city, hold a sense of legitimacy in passing these resolutions, and we do it all the time. You know, just a couple of months ago, we passed the SB 230, supporting the legislation in the state that would impact the laws around policing, right? Here we are today weighing in on another federal issue, so we can't. Although, you know, these are technically nonpartisan positions that we hold, it's up to us as leaders to lead in the best way that we can. And although our authority is limited, our voice counts for something, and the city of Fresno's voice counts for something. So we can't, we can't cop out because it's out of our jurisdiction. We have to look forward and look for any way we can, whether it's our voice or actual legislation, to improve the quality of life for all the people, all the residents who live here in Fresno. So I'll be supporting this resolution today.
Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to remind this body that I appreciate and value Member Karabasi's position about not weighing on national issues that we have no jurisdiction over. But at every council meeting, we start off with a prayer, and we're supposed to not be a religious body. At every council meeting, we start with, "In God we trust" behind us, and we're not supposed to be a religious body. Words matter. Positions that city leaders take, positions that we as a collective take, matter. And I would just ask us to be consistent. If we're going to be in a chamber with those words above us, if we're going to start every meeting with a prayer for everybody's well-being, if we're going to indicate that everyone here is equally valued, then we should do that in every action we take, not just those that are politically convenient. With that, I call for the question.
So, Member Karabasi.
We also start with a flag salute too. No, you know, see, I see right now, earlier, we had some contention with the issue regarding Airbnb. We came together and passed it unanimously, and we're going to continue to fix that issue. Juan, you're seeing democracy right here. No one is saying you don't matter. You do matter. I don't want to sell you a false promise. This right now lies with the federal government. And I encourage you, and I know you're already doing it probably, talking, lobbying your elected officials at the federal level to actually do something about this. Now, regarding SB 230, that wasn't a national, that was a state issue, and it hadn't been decided yet. And yes, we took a position, and I was here and I spoke as a resident in support of SB 230. But the reforms we were pushing for with SB 230 would have impacted all of us, even Juan. This body has already taken a vote on this issue, and I'm just saying, we unanimously in 2013 took a vote. If we want to join the Amicus brief, go ahead and do it individually, as that email that made us aware of this did. That was an option that we had there. But you know what? This is a democracy. I'm going to respectfully abstain, and I respect the position you're all going to take.
And just to remind everyone, if DACA is eliminated, we have more than 5,000 unemployed residents. And $400 million worth of wages gone away. It will be a direct and financial impact for our city, so there is a correlation to local. I just want to make sure for the record, it's clear that. To remember Nelson's point, this does have a local impact. That's why we're discussing it today.
All right, folks.
Mr. President, oh, nevermind.
Not a problem. I want to cover everything with everybody, but I think we're going down different paths. I think we're close to a vote, but to respond, if you wish, Member Karabasi, that's your privilege and your time. All right, so I'm the last, and I was part of that group in 2013. It was a unanimous vote to support the program and we supported by, not only a majority, unanimously, that there should be immigration comprehensive reform. These issues are up to our congressional leaders, our representatives, our senators, our president. And they have to work together, and they are unable to do so. I feel that if that issue truly were a city issue, this body here could solve it. One way or the other, we could solve it. And I challenge the representatives on either side of the aisle in Washington DC to step it up, step your game up. This needs to be resolved, and it takes, as we do here, it takes people with an open mind, a willingness to compromise, a willingness to work together. And I urge them to do that. On the other hand, excuse me, I'm a very strong advocate for my district. I really believe the city issues are my paramount concern. That's what I was elected to do. That's what my constituents expect me to do, and I've done it for seven years, and I want to stay focused on those city issues. But on the other hand, I understand this side, the other side of the legislature as well, and to be consistent with my vote from 2013, I'll be supporting the issue. So the screen is clear. If we want to do an electronic vote, we can do so. And push the button, yes, no, or abstain, whatever your pleasure is on this issue. The measure passes. What is that, 615? I'm sorry, didn't see the top. So we have an abstention as indicated by Member Karabasi, a no vote as indicated by Member Brettafield, and the ballots are yeses. So that will conclude our agenda today. We have closed session, and the city attorney will address that. Is there anyone that wishes to talk about a closed session item? You can do so now. You can come up and talk to us. Seeing none, we'll close that. City Attorney, the floor is yours. Thank you.
In closed session, we have Agabashan versus City of Fresno, also Lacy versus City of Fresno, and three real estate property negotiations concerning 4736 North Blythe, 911 Merced, 1911 Merced, 735 H Street, and I would not expect any announcement afterwards.